Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'll be able to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just okay is not okay.
What are you doing? That's weird.
We are in order, yeah.
Right, we're, yeah. Let's get up.
I see that.
And we're all straight up.
That doesn't mean stand.
Let's go.
Where's the flag, Eric?
The flag's over there, you can get up.
Uh, the Custer County Board of County Commission meeting will come to order. Let the record show that today is February the 19th, 2020, and time is nine o'clock, 8:00 a.m. Mr. Elliott, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
I would not mind.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, appreciate that. Madam clerk to the board, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Uh, Ms. Flower.
Present.
Mr. Candor.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Yeah.
Attorney clerk Smith.
Present.
And Courtroom Board Kelly Campbell.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Audience introduction. Elliott, would you like to start?
Um, yes, Elliot Jackson with the Land Mountain Tribune, East Street from the West Custer County Hospital District.
Jackie.
Jackie Harvey, Custer County, planning and zoning.
Reece Crumper, Wetmore Fire.
Thank you, good morning and welcome, nice to have you all here. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen.
I have none, sir.
Mr. Candor.
Nope.
I have one, I would move that we move the two items of business concerning the airport grant and the ALOS contract up the agenda in deference to Commissioner Candor having to leave this morning, so
That's a good point, I was thinking about that.
if he has to bail early, at least we can get through those. So I don't really care where we put those, but my motion would be to amend the agenda. I'd say let's... I'm gonna say between consideration of joining the chamber and reach air, is that all right, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved a second to amend the agenda by moving consideration of the airport grant and the ALOS grant uh, to the third item under new business discussion. And the reason I picked that was because if Ron travels down here just for that and we ended up bumping him way down, well, I'm not sure that would be fair, so.
Right.
Further discussion, hearing members proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, posnay, motion carries, uh, let me just check in on all the...
So you put it after the water line?
After.
After the Chamber of Commerce.
After the Chamber of Commerce or the water line?
It's two things.
Water line, Chamber of Commerce, somebody try it.
Pardon me?
Water line, Chamber of Commerce, somebody try it.
Yes. Are those together? Okay, let me just drop this in here a little bit. Well, he does now, he didn't yesterday, but...
Probably didn't know where it was.
Showed up at the office yesterday, wanting, ready for the meeting.
Oh, he did?
So then I have, uh, second reading, chamber, airport grant, ALOS grant, reach. So, yeah, I'm missing the water line. Uh, okay, so the water line's right after the chamber?
Yeah.
Yes.
Discussion on water line.
I don't know, I must've inadvertently deleted that, I don't know.
Just put it there.
So it really would be after the water line then, are you okay with that, gentlemen?
Yep, yes.
Thank you, my mistake. So now I have second reading, chamber, water line, airport grant, ALOS grant, reach, planning and zoning, zoning violations, and finance, is that what y'all have? Yeah, Jackie, it bumped you down a little, but...
I'm really busy, but I'll hang ten.
Okay. Anything else on the amending agenda? Approve of the minutes, I believe we have any commissioner items, Commissioner Candor, would you like to begin, sir?
Yeah, since the last meeting, we did quite a few different things, all of us did. Uh, South Club Waterline Discussion, I thought was a good meeting, but we haven't. We'll hear the results of that today, I hope, the rest of the story. Uh, the Shields 626 was a neat presentation where they had the group that had helped sponsor the armor for the Sheriff's Department was there, it was a neat program. And, uh, and it's great, a great bunch of hardware that they got as well out, so I thought that was great, thank you. Then I talked to, uh, Jerry Tracewell, who's working with the shooting range for the kids at the school, and took him out to the sheriff's shooting range rifle range. And it looks like that's gonna be a good spot for it, um, they like the layout of the thing, I made up a couple maps for him. Uh, he's gonna go talk with, uh, who's, uh, Byerly's brother, Todd.
Todd.
He's gonna go work with Todd and talk to the sheriff and see what to come back. And we'll see what we end up doing. Uh, airport meeting, we had a good meeting with Armstrong Engineering, and we discussed two things. One was the airport grant for the ALOS, the other was, uh, engineering projects for David Watts. On that grant, and we'll talk about that later in here on the agenda, uh, we had the grant approved, but we have to do a couple things, we've got to pass a resolution to make it conform with what they want to have, and, um, and then we'll start executing that, it looks like the timeline's first of July to actually begin work out there, so the plan, get it done in a month. And, uh, been, uh, caught up on the fiber project with, uh, with Mark Carmel and Tom. They had, did attend that meeting, uh, statewide meeting on how to work the grant, and we met with Sally Clark along with others. Lot of progress, they got the letter filled out that we provided for their request for the right to wait, and C.Dot's working on it. As soon as they give me the formal write-up for the, of all the data, I'll send it to all of us. That should be today or tomorrow. And that's all I got for now.
Mr. Prince.
Thanks, sir. Um, I'm pretty busy since our last meeting, um, on the 7th, I attended the, along with everybody else at this table, the Round Mountain Water Discussion about us approving their water line for them. Um, I, uh, attended the, uh...
Rather Jake for the mic, Sam.
I apologize.
I, I know I have that issue, I'm sorry. On the 11th, uh, I, uh, attended the tourism board meeting, uh, they voted to fill their vacancies, they'll be presenting that to us in a couple of meetings, next one or the one after, but they'll present their recommendations to us. And I attended the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Government Special Meeting on the 11th, um, and then that night I attended, uh, the Republican Committee Meeting. Um, let's see. Of course, we, we all attended the, on the 13th, uh, interviews for landfill supervisor.
I forgot about that one.
I think we did real well, all three of us were here. Uh, let's see, what else do I have? Uh, I talked to several people about roads, I got some wonderful compliments about hardscrabble, which was the major issue, had been over and over and over, about how terrible it was, and last, uh, last I heard, people feel the same.
Which was it?
Hardscrabble. So, uh, you know, I just kinda kept busy with all the stuff I normally do.
Uh, I think I just went off task a little bit, could you repeat your hardscrabble thing, I missed all of that, I'm sorry.
I was just saying that I spoke to a group of folks I was speaking to, I was at a coffee shop and they kinda cornered me, and they just wanted to tell me how wonderful they thought hardscrabble was in the last week or two compared to how it was three weeks ago. Apparently, um, Road and Bridge did an excellent job of smoothing it out, getting rid of all the ripples and stuff in there, so this group was very pleased.
North Hardscrabble.
That's a highway, I'm confused.
You see that, there's hardscrabble.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm thinking...
And road to Zeta?
Ah, I'm so sorry, the road to, um, Oak Creek Grade? Oak Creek Grade, thank you, I apologize, that's what I meant, Oak Creek Grade.
I, I heard Oak Creek Grade.
Wow.
Oh, you didn't say it.
Wow.
Yeah, I've been driving it every day. I like the red hot show.
Connection here.
Can I share that?
I'm sorry, Oak Creek Grade had been a major...
Gotcha, okay, alright, good.
And Gary took good care of it, so I appreciate that.
Good.
I want to pass on the compliment.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Uh, let's see, so, 7th, I also attended the commissioner workshop where we dealt with the water line. Uh, February 10th, I attended a legislative reception in Denver, I had a great opportunity to visit with, uh, President of the Senate, Leo Garcia, uh, and then, of course, Jim Wilson and Larry Crowder, and we just had a, had a great conversation. Subsequent to that, I'll just throw this out, as it turns out, I had a visitor come in the commissioner's room, and she was wanting some direction on how to start a business as a young, uh, woman in Custer County, and I said, "Well, I won't go into all the details, 'cause she asked me not to just yet," but the point was, I said, "I will reach out to the, uh, President of the Senate's office," 'cause I, it was a day after I'd met with him, and, and I said, "I will reach out to his office to see if they can't give us some guidance and some direction," and so, uh, subsequently, then I ran into him later, uh, Garcia, and he said, "Yeah, I got your email," and he said, "I've got a gal working on your stuff." So it'll be interesting to see if we can get some, some help there from the, from his office, but... Uh, then the next day, I was, while I was in Denver, I went over, uh, to Kaiser Permanente's warehouse uh, off of I-70 and 45th, and picked up, I found out later, $6,500 worth of donated medical equipment for public health. Uh, they've got kind of a clearing out, well, they don't, well, not a clearing house, they have, Kaiser Permanente has a storage facility there, and apparently, they are changing their business plan a little bit, and they told the manager of that storage facility, "You gotta get all the stuff out of here by the 1st of June," so apparently, he put something out there that if there were people interested, they could contact him and, uh, see if there was equipment that they could use, so, uh, I'm assuming Alyssa set that all up, and Mrs. Flower asked if I was gonna be in Denver any time, and, uh, if I was, could I pick up some stuff? So my gosh, I went in there, great guy, had a good experience with him, um, he said, "Now, I can, if you need IV poles, I can fix you up, I got 175 IV poles." I said, "No, I don't need any IV poles." Uh, he said, "I got 35 negative air, negative pressure blower." I said, "No." He said, "Well, you're taking one." I said, "Okay." But I, I thought I don't need 35. So we did, good, uh, good time picking that stuff up, and he also, he said, "Do you need radios?" And I said, "Yeah, we always need radios." He said, "Well, I've got about 40 boxes, cases of 800 megahertz radios," but he said, "I've got some people that are interested in them," and he said, "I, I could send you home with a couple cases of those." I said, "Great." Uh, he said, "There's two in a box, everything's included." He said, "What about, uh, radio to radio?" I said, "Yeah." So he sent two cases, I think there's five in each case for that, so those girls were very excited to get that stuff. So anyway, uh, brought that back, and we did store some of that in the annex, because they didn't have room in public health, so we're gonna work on that. And then on the 11th, that evening, I also attended the Republican Central Committee Meeting over in the annex, uh... And then on the 13th, the commissioners conducted interviews for the landfill manager's position, and we offered that to an individual, and he accepted. Uh, and for the record, for people down here, you may know Brian Lockhart, we hired him to be our new landfill manager starting on the 9th of March, so, uh, we're glad to get that position filled. And also on the 13th, I attended the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District Meeting in Salida. Uh, nothing real earth-shattering come out of that, but I can talk about it a little bit on the agenda. And then, uh, February 15th, I attended the Fremont County Lincoln Day Dinner, the Republican Dinner down there, it was interesting, uh, got to meet a few new people. A former resident of Custer County is running for county commissioner in Fremont County, Jim Moore. Uh, unfortunately, he's running against Kevin Granton, the two-term senator or representative and Speaker of the House, so I don't know how that's gonna go, but we'll see, you remember Jim Moore, Jim and Anna?
Anna was...
You're running for county commissioner?
Yeah, he's running for county commissioner in District 1, I think. What?
Kevin Granton was also running for county commissioner?
Yes, he is done, he's finished his state term stuff, finished a year ago, a year and a half ago.
Haven't heard that.
Yeah, and, uh...
You better let people know about that.
He's living back in Canyon City and decided to run for county commissioner, so I got to visit with him a little bit, and hadn't seen Jim Moore in probably 15 years, 10 or 15 years. So he, she was your cousin? Yeah. And their boy went to high school there, it was, anyway, so, um, it was good to see them well. I believe that we need to do something. We talked about this, I think, in our last meeting, um, I visited with Jackie a little about it, uh, there are, there's actually a piece of legislation, I don't, I tried to look it up to see when it was going to the floor, I couldn't find that, but, uh, some, couples, well, a representative is the lead sponsor on that bill, I don't, do you remember the number of it, Jackie? I don't either, and, uh, anyway, they're trying to get some legislation that would allow, well, for, first of all, to allow the state to come up with a system to license, uh, short-term rentals. Morning, Ron.
Morning.
So I don't know, I guess we can kinda wait and see how that goes, I know Jackie said, "Hey, then maybe we should hold off until we see what's gonna come out of the legislative session this year."
That's what's coming down.
But I just, I don't know, I, I, I guess I wanted to ask you guys if you felt like we should go back to the Plannings Commission and ask them to revisit that issue.
But that's what I'm doing.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna commit, I'm gonna, oppression, have we asked the Planning Commission to come up with a recommendation?
Uh, we did.
We had a meeting.
Yeah, I don't remember when that was, June or...
We had a meeting, and we had some people that had VRBOs show up, and at the end of the meeting, um, we kinda came to the conclusion that when you have lobbyists from Breckenridge, Bell, and them, that are for VRBOs, that, uh, we oughta wait till a county that has a little bit more funds can fight it, but we can't, and that, and Tom was there during that meeting, so that's how come it got, it kinda got tabled to, because you've got lobbyists that are from Breckenridge and stuff, and those towns don't want it, but we do have an out, because Custer County is a land use county, uh, we dictate, basically, since we're a land use county, what you can do with your property. They would have to get an S U P, because you have to decide whether you consider a VRBO a business.
And that would be a county decision, right? I mean, we're probably not gonna get that from the state legislature, they're gonna leave it up to counties.
This is what you could do locally, but you need to decide is a VRBO a business? Because if it is a business, then they would have to apply for an S U P. Then their property would be under, uh, commercial property taxes.
Right. So under the land use thing, Jackie, there's no place in Custer County, rural Custer County, unincorporated Custer County, that is zoned commercial, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if somebody's running a commercial enterprise in the county, legally, they would have to have had an S U P, special use permit, okay. Yeah, Jackie's right, I did attend that meeting, and it was kinda early on in this whole discussion, and we had some local people there as well, saying, "Hey, we don't think this is right," and, and I thought they laid out some reasonable arguments about why we shouldn't have anything about VRBOs, and I kind of agreed with them at that meeting. I said, "You know what, you bring up some points I hadn't thought about, understand that." Well, there's been a lot of, uh, VRBO water running under the bridge since then, and I've kinda changed my opinion about some of that. But then again, I know that we're gonna open ourselves up to that proverbial, "You need to stay, government needs to stay out of our lives." Well, I get that to a degree, but if you wanna open a business in Custer County, then I think you should be subject to the rules and regulations dealing with commercial enterprises in the county, I don't...
Yeah, but we can't work that right now, but we do need to wait, uh, I think, until the Senate, or whatever they, whatever, is it the House bill they're working on?
Well, yeah, it won't have anything to do with local jurisdictions.
But it will be able to see what the tendency is, or what the picture is.
We are unique, because we do have certain rigs that we can import. Also, you gotta remember the water, you can't have a bunkhouse on your property to rent out, we don't allow you to rent your bunkhouse out. We also, you cannot run your well from your home to another structure if you are on less than 35 acres. So, I'm sure there's something we could do, but you're looking at a huge lobby. You know, when you get Bell and Breckenridge and Aspen, and they don't want to stop VRBOs, they're...
I think Commissioner Prince and I are gonna respond according, uh, but go ahead, sir, take... Yeah.
That, to me, I understand that may eventually lead into more commotion than we really want, however...
When we started...
I've heard only that Rosina wasn't.
I personally feel that irrespective of any lobbies or any threats of boycotts or threats of lawsuits, we in Custer County need to move forward with what we feel is appropriate for our citizens. And let the chips fall where they may, if lobbies come in and say X, Y, Z, then we respond at that time, but I don't think we cower away from doing what, what we feel may be the right thing to do, because we're afraid of somebody coming in to do something, so I don't know if that's where we're going, but that's how I see it.
Yeah, um, and I, I don't wanna get into a big, long, protracted conversation, I, I tell you what I would like to do, is I'd like to put this on the agenda for next meeting, then we can have a discussion. I don't think it's fair, I was gonna make a motion that, that we ask the Planning Commission for action, but I think we'd better wait, so by consent, if you are at that, I'd like to put that on the agenda and we'll move on for a day, so...
We can talk about this, okay.
So considerate, or, uh, actually, probably consideration of requesting Planning Commission to...
It means a workshop.
Look into short-term...
Changing, amending the zoning rates.
Yeah, it will end up being amending the zoning rate, but...
Discussion.
Yeah.
Why am I thinking we did that already, because we lost?
Uh...
We wanna go back to them and tell them reconsider, we're not...
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, well...
We haven't heard back.
We never, I guess we did get a formal response, they said.
We didn't get a formal response, but we were, we attended the same meeting, and it was just...
Kinda dropped.
But you guys need to still...
But that's not official, Commissioner, because Tom attended, it needs to be presented to the commission what you're finding is.
Right, and they gotta have it together, come up with a...
They just never came to a decision, and I'm not sure...
Well, but, you know, they don't have to come back and talk to us, if they're in stages, that's fine. If they don't have a decision, they can still talk to us why, and then we can go forward, but...
I agree with you completely, if we ask them to do something, we oughta get a response, regardless of what the response is.
You never really don't have a recommendation.
But I, I don't think, I think that it's not a no and it's not a yes, because I think we were filtering through the water, but if you put it on the agenda...
Call it a status?
If you put it on the agenda when I have my staff meeting again, uh, we can discuss it then, and I'll show you what I come up with.
Okay, well, we put it on the agenda for the 29th, so...
And let's just call it a status where you are, and you can come back and we can go from there.
Then we can...
You don't have to make a...
Let's put it on, it's not on the agenda now, it's not really appropriate to discuss it, it has length now, call it a status.
Yeah, okay.
Progress.
So we'll move on then, unless, gentlemen, you have other commissioner items?
Victoria, sir.
Uh, Upper Ark Water Conservancy District Report, I did attend that meeting, uh, last week, um... It's kind of business as usual, there, I did ask them during the ex officio report time if anybody at that table could explain to me what the Blue Line Expansion Committee was. And interestingly enough, nobody could come right out and answer that, and I said, "Well..."
Just can't get an answer?
No, I said, I said, "Let me help you out." So what I think, that it's a misnamed committee altogether. I said, "In Custer County, there are people who believe the Blue Line Expansion Committee is a committee to look at expanding the proposed blue line."
The original?
Yeah, the original proposal. "No, no, no, that's not it, that's not it." I said, "Well, what is it exactly?" And they said, "It is a committee to monitor the whole blue line, nothing about expanding." And technically, the blue line as we know it is an expansion of an existing augmentation plan. So I guess that's where, they thought that's where the term expansion came from, but it really is a...
Blue Line Committee.
Blue Line Committee to monitor and give recommendations to the board.
Obviously, I'm off base, my impression was that this was a committee to meet with local Custer County ranchers, farmers, agricultural folks, to figure out how to amend what they presented, so that we can all live in peace and harmony with that augmentation plan, is that not the case?
I think that pretty well sums it up, yes. I'm looking something up here as we're speaking, um, yeah, so I just said, you know, I think there's a lot of heartburn about just the misnomer of that being an expansion committee.
Well, what they told me was that that was the, the group that specifically focuses on the blue line, uh, board members and engineers, uh, you know, that's, that's, they were the right people to talk to, as opposed to coming in there and pugging me and talking to the whole board, that's how it got started.
Yeah, I get that, but my impression was that we were opening up the discussion on how to amend what they proposed.
And we could fix things before it got into court.
Exactly, so we don't have to, where we can all sit down and kumbaya and get this done, where we're all somewhat satisfied.
We consider ideas, and they're looking at proposals, they looked at that last one, and that's it.
And I really, in my heart, hope this is not just a stall practice to get through what they originally proposed, because I, in my heart, I have real concerns about their true, their true...
They are modifying it as they resolve with different people, so that is in fact happened, and I've been changing over what they originally started.
They have not amended...
They have reported it to...
Yeah, but they haven't amended a single thing to the court where they're requesting the blue line, and that's where I'm getting concerned.
Well, that's what we got to do.
That's where it needs to be done, they need to say, you know, "We want this approved, here is the new blue line, we've changed the dimensions of where it goes." I have not seen that once, this has been going on well over a year, so I have concerns of the legitimacy of what they're trying to do, whether they're just trying to stall till it's too late or what.
You're gonna go to the next meeting, right?
I am not.
We'll bring that, so...
I will be visiting, should I was...
I will be putting out, yeah, I notice, but I do have concerns.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, and then along that line, they are stipulating, uh, opposers as this whole process moves along. They voted to approve the stipulation of two or three entities at this last meeting, and they're stipulating them out of the lawsuit, they are...
They are, uh, getting one.
Meeting their concerns, those entities' concerns, and so, uh, and my understanding is, from the documents I've received from the courts and from, uh, the attorneys representing Upper Ark, we are no longer listed as an opposer in that lawsuit. Uh, we had indicated them early on, we were not gonna seek, uh, retained counsel to represent us in that lawsuit, so the status conference report I got on February the 17th... So, the status conference report I got on February the 3rd does not list us as an opposer.
I think Custer County itself has no standing.
Correct.
Can't be in it if we wanted to.
And we have, we indicated that to them, and so I think they were in the, we were a pro se party to that, but when we said we're not going to hire counsel. We are listed as a pro se party that was served via electronic mail, but I suspect the next document we get from the water court's not going to have us listed, so.
It would be appropriate if West Cliff is having the same issue because they per se do not have any water rights themselves, so they're just an interested party.
Correct. Yeah, and I actually believe Round Mountain is in the same boat. I don't think they retained counsel, but I could be wrong there.
But they're definitely a party because they do have augmented water.
Right.
So, up to them what they do, we don't control what's up.
And then, as you guys are aware from our meeting about the water on stories, Round Mountain is looking at constructing a reservoir south of town-
Right.
-and probably using augmented, buying augmented water, or allowing Upper Ark to store augmented water there so that Upper Ark can sell that water.
Therein lies the advantage of having an Upper Ark and so water conservancy district, where we can allocate water as needed.
Right.
So, when I argue about that, I'm not totally opposed to that. I was just opposed to perhaps-
Yeah, I feel exactly the same way. I mean, I think Upper Ark is, has a purpose, and if we don't take advantage of that when it's appropriate, then we're crazy.
Absolutely agree. I just don't want to be dictated. I don't want all farmers and ranchers to be dictated on how it's going to handle.
Yeah, and I think as a county directly, we're going to end up being involved with that whole thing. It's my guess is that an attempt to try to lease or buy water from Upper Ark for our road and bridge department.
And I think that's exactly what they're for.
Something's got to change. We're going to have to make a change somewhere along the way. So, anyway, I digress a little bit there, but that's kind of where-
Clint, Clint's chomping at the bit now.
Yeah, he looked at it.
And that's his preference.
So, that's all I have, I think, on that Upper Ark report. Attorney item?
I attended the meeting last week, the workshop to select the landfill supervisor just sat in, didn't get a vote.
Oh, really?
But, yes, my opinion, so I gave it.
Nice.
Although my opinion about doing it the way Harvey Weinstein does was not accepted.
No, it wasn't. Let the record show it. That didn't slide.
You cut that out of the recording.
Jackie and I have talked about, and we've worked on a proposed amendment to zoning resolution to include some language for cease and desist orders. We have a provision in the onsite wastewater treatment system rates for cease and desist orders, but we don't have anything comparable in the zoning resolution, and we think it would be a good idea because there's sort of a gap there. If there's a violation, they send, we send letters, Jackie sends letters, and if we don't get a response, then the next step, all that's left is to take legal action, but if we have a cease and desist order provision, that would give us another remedy sort of in between and see if we can get some issues resolved that way. I think Shannon probably shared with all of you the communication he got from the HOA in Cuernavada about cattle. They don't want cattle in their subdivision.
He did a good job writing that up, too, I know.
Yeah, Shannon, and he responded to that, and I told him I thought that was great. If they don't want to drop it after what he's explained to them, because he said they might want to come to the county commissioners, I'll certainly, you know, be prepared to back him up and explain what the law is. They just sort of picked certain things out of the statute that's kind of supported their provision or their position, but they didn't really understand what they were talking about, I don't think. Jackie and I are ready to file a lawsuit in one case, which is on the agenda, so we'll talk about that. And I guess that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I like the record show that I actually listened to what he had to say.
Oh, you did, because I got up and took a little break.
While you guys were up there doing your thing.
Yeah, we heard it.
Yeah, I did. I wonder if the administrative assistant has anything she'd like to bring before the group today?
Okay.
Public comments? If anybody would like to have a comment that doesn't pertain to anything on the agenda, now would be the appropriate time. Yes, ma'am?
I don't know if it's going to be on the agenda. Will it be under unfinished business or additional items of business? To ask the question, are you, gentlemen, in receipt of the letter from the, from the hospital district board?
We are.
And will that be discussed sometime in this unfinished business or additional items of business?
It would not unless somebody wants to bring that, but public comment would be, I think, an appropriate time to discuss that.
So, right now?
Yes.
Okay, let's discuss that.
Okay.
Let me pull that document up.
Or you can do it immediately.
I wasn't sure if it was going to be-
No, that's a great question.
Considered something else to, that I was jumping the gun or-
If you don't mind, give me just a second.
Sure.
Pull that up.
Yes, we can update it.
What's up?
Yeah, I'm going to see what.
Could take a while.
We received the email February the 12th.
So, you were handed a letter?
I'm sorry.
Same thing.
Yeah, I asked administrative assistant to scan it and email it to me.
I got you, okay.
And I think it was the 11th was the day. And I did, we did, I wasn't there at the office at that time, and Kara didn't know who brought it. She knew it was somebody from the clinic.
Yes.
Do you know who did it?
It would have been Mary Bauer, our office supervisor.
Okay, all right, so.
Sorry. No, that's okay. B A U E R.
Okay.
Mary Bauer.
So, and then I asked her to just digitize that for us, and she emailed. That's why I said we got the email.
Oh, correct, no worries.
But I meant from Kara on the 12th. So, yes.
So, the question would be, so, so the letter was saying that we are in receipt of your letter that you sent to Bob Tobin, and that we wanted to meet with you, to sit and meet with you. We selected the 27th, which is next Thursday. Prior to our board meeting, we would have a special board meeting at 1:00. So, that was the question. So, the question to you is, will you be accepting that invitation? Do we, otherwise, we won't have a special meeting.
Okay, got it.
It's just for this conversation as far as-
Okay, great question. I've got it on my calendar. It's at 1:00.
It would be at 1:00. Our board meeting is at 3:00. We thought we would meet before our scheduled board meeting.
Got you.
What was that date, please?
Just on the same day as your board.
September 27th.
February.
I was, oh, wow, September.
Yeah.
February 27th, so next Thursday at 1:00.
Yeah, February 27th at 1:00.
I don't know where that came from.
In the clinic, I know, isn't it weird how this stuff kind of goes? So, I guess the question is, gentlemen, are you interested in attending that?
Absolutely, I am.
I, as am I. When I read the letter, I, there was a couple of things that I was a little confused about. And if you don't mind, I can speak to that.
You may read the letter if you'd like. It's not a, yes, certainly.
The third sentence says, "We'd also like to share with you a motion that was passed at our special board meeting in February 11th." It reads, "Since the inclusion mechanism is not feasible at this time, we will continue to provide EMS services to service East Custer County and explore alternative funding." So, my two questions there, I keep looking at Bob, although I see everybody signed that, so I don't know who actually penned the letter. I don't know what the inclusion mechanism means. I've never heard that term.
I, in fact, emailed you or called you and said, "Do you have any ideas as to..."
Yeah, so, can we speak to that, either one?
Sure, so actually, Mr. Kanda was at the meeting where we did the inclusion motion. The intent of the board, and Bob, speak up if I'm saying anything correctly, was to, the board can, could, according to the special district rules, could include an area outside the district, okay? Then it was, so they made that motion to start those, that process, to include anybody outside the hospital district, specifically for services as far as EMS service goes. Then it was determined, I believe they, I believe Bob talked to Kelly Camper, and she said, "No, you can't tease out just three mills. It has to be all or nothing." So, my question then was, okay, so now, now what happens? So, now we can't tease out like we thought we could do. We could include everybody outside the district and just assess the three mill designated for EMS to everything outside the district, but that can't happen.
Right.
So, since that can't happen, now we're at, now what do we do?
Okay, so that was the inclusion mechanism.
That was the inclusion, yes, sir.
The attempt to include outside.
Correct.
Okay, so, it's not feasible, I understand that, so, the hospital district, so, yeah, hospital district will continue to provide EMS services to, to service East Custer County. Okay. And then my second question is, and explore alternate, alternative funding about including them?
Yes.
Is that what?
Yes.
So, let me ask you a question. Tom's head, which brings it up. In that meeting, you have three mills already allocated for EMS, and what you're saying is you can't just automatically extend it to three more mills outside that. What did the, what was the other thing you guys said there was a mechanism you had to, to do this, that you were going to talk to the lawyers about it? It was, it was a handbill. What was it called?
So, it was actually an inclusion that the residents outside the district can do on their own and come together and ask to be included into the district.
But I thought you had, you had referred to some pamphlets that you guys had, but we don't have any.
I'm not aware of a pamphlet or-
Option two is the one.
Option two for something. What was that?
That might be the special district handbook.
Oh, yes, that's a special, yes.
That was a special district handbook, so that's not the right process that you-
Well, it's not that. It would be the right process if we could somehow find a way around putting the whole mill to East Custer County, but apparently we can't.
We'd have to have the whole mill for the whole county. I understand why.
Through a ballot initiative.
Yeah, yeah, Kelly can also point.
So, there's, there's, what, three different ways that they could include this area down here, but you have to, because they're a hospital district and not an ambulance district, it includes their whole mill. So, no matter how they do it, no matter which of the three ways they did it, it would have to include the whole mill, because you're taking this area into the hospital district, not the ambulance district.
Because there's no ambulance district.
Right, there is no ambulance.
There's no ambulance district.
So, with Harder Rockies coming in and looking for you, with Harder Rockies coming in, would it, just, it's just a question, would it make sense to change the hospital district to an ambulance district, reallocate it for the entire county, and then have ambulance service for the entire county?
In my humble opinion, no. And the reason for this is, so, the West Custer County Hospital District does not go away. With the marriage between Harder Rockies and the Custer County Medical Center, it doesn't go away. The hospital district stands as it is. The board still continues to have to be voted in, okay? That, that board is now, or will become, the overseers of both Custer County Medical Center, that will be run by Harder Rockies, and Custer County EMS. So, the district doesn't go away, and Harder Rockies, the only part that they impact is really the Custer County Medical Center, i.e. the clinic. They don't impact EMS at all, and the roles, for instance, my role and the finance manager role, as we do work for EMS or do district work, right, since we will also be employees of Harder Rockies, Harder Rockies then builds the district for our work for EMS or the district, because we still have reports to do, cross reports to do, all these other things that the district still has to do.
I understand.
So, the, the district doesn't, the district can't go away.
So, what about bifurcating the ambulance district from the hospital district, have a separate new ambulance district for the entire county, and that way you can establish your mill for the ambulance for the county? Is there a problem with this? Am I saying something?
No, 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 no.
Oh, I apologize.
No, no.
So, I'm wondering if we, I'm just asking a question.
It's my understanding as-
My thing of concern is I have to have ambulance service for the eastern portion of this district, and you graciously have agreed to do that, and I really appreciate that, but we need to come up with some long-term solutions.
Well, great, and that's one of the reasons that, I know I personally, when we received, when Bob received the letter from you saying that you'd like to meet with us, I thought, great, we can actually sit down and have a conversation like adults and work on something. That's what I thought. So, I'm hopeful that we can still do that and talk about how might this look? Because what's happening now is you have a meeting, we have a meeting.
That's why we asked for a meeting.
Yeah, exactly, so that's why we're like, let's sit down and talk.
I attended every ambulance meeting that I was invited to at the ambulance barn, and we came up with many ideas on how to resolve ambulance service to eastern portion of the county, Wetmore and surrounding areas.
Right, so that is an EMS committee meeting that gives recommendations to the full board.
I fully understand that.
So, rather than even go there, let's all sit down in the same room, you three, those five, Teresa and I, sit down, have a conversation, what might, and it's a special meeting, so it's open. It's not like we're going to close the doors and not allow anybody in there. But it's not a workshop. We're, we're going to sit and talk about what are the options and what makes sense.
And that's the February 27th at 1:00 meeting.
Yes, sir.
Got it. I think that's a great idea. Nothing will get done unless we sit down and work it out, talk it through.
For that meeting, it would be helpful, but I don't understand, would that be an option two handbook, whatever it is?
Yeah, I can probably clarify a lot of that right now that Teresa has. The special district handbook suggests various ways to do inclusions. However, as you heard, inclusion hasn't done a work, so we might as well take that and put it on the side. There are other alternatives, and we'll talk about those at the meeting. There's also the ultimate funding question, which is, okay, if we agree to provide ambulance service as we have, we should be paid something somehow from somebody. So, that's an issue we've got to come up with. Do you think we have a solution? Stopgap. But obviously, a long-term solution should make the residents of Wetmore and East Custer County far more comfortable, and this we're going to get to.
Yeah, so, I, I guess I have two questions. One, the letter says, "We will continue to provide EMS services to service East Custer County," at whose expense temporarily?
It's, it's been at our expense.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we, we asked for, we had a work group that asked for money, and that was-
Right.
Can I respond to that?
Uh, yes, thank you.
In my meetings with your ambulance fleet, now it would be a recommendation you want to understand, I encourage them to ask for the money that was discussed. That letter was never sent. So, I want you to know-
No, I, I hear, I hear you.
And I'm speaking for myself, not the other commissioner, that I personally feel that what Mr. Tobin just said is absolutely correct. You're providing services at no fee. This is a county option. I think the county has some culpability here, so.
And so, we'd love to talk about that.
I urged them to do it, and they didn't. So, I just want to make sure that it wasn't us here. That'll be part of the conversation.
Yes, thank you.
And then my second question has to do with and explore alternative funding. There's no mention in this letter about considering AMR or other professional ambulance services.
AMR or another ambulance service.
It's really a separate-
Would be the cost, that's not funding.
Correct, there's no mention of that in this letter. Is that still on the table from as far as the hospital district board of directors is concerned?
You guys will be there, and you want to talk about it. We'll talk about it.
So, it is still a viable item of discussion?
Not in our opinion.
Okay, that's what I was told, that's why I'm asking you. Yep. So, if it's not a viable item of discussion-
I don't think we should take it off the table until it's discussed openly.
I don't think we should take it off the table until it's discussed openly.
Until everybody talks and we have a consensus of what we want to do together.
Right.
Doesn't do us any good to keep coming and saying, I don't want to do this, and I do.
That is correct, that's what's happened so far, is one group gets together and says, we're going to do this, and, no, and that's, so, here we are on May the 23rd, it'll be a year later since we received the letter from Florence, that says we're not going to cover this area. So, we're almost a year out now, we're pretty close to a year out, and we really are no closer now than we were then. Ah, that's not true, we kind of are, but rather than back and forth and back and forth, and he said this, and he said that, and she said this, and, let's just sit down and talk about good, bad, and ugly, and figure out what's the best thing for the citizens of the community, and go from there.
Okay, other public comment?
I just have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Why in the hell can't you just have a election requiring our section of the county to come up with three or four mills, whatever's in violation, and solve the damn thing? Why is it so difficult?
Uh, I think that's certainly a discussion item that's probably going to be on the table.
It will be on the table, except for, here's the problem, because we're a special district, so we have to follow the special district laws, and what Kelly is saying is that we're not allowed to tease out, so right now, our mills for the district are 7.908. Of that, we went to voters to say, of the 7.908, three mills is dedicated to EMS, so it's not 7.9 plus three, it's three of the 7.9, okay? So, we're not allowed to just take three and bill you guys, if you will, three, not allowed to do that against the law, we all go to jail, look good, and orange.
I know that, but why can't you put it into a election to do that?
But it doesn't, you can take it to a, you're not allowed to, by state statute, according to being a special district law, you're not allowed to.
But there are ways.
It's either 7.908 or not.
And that's why I suggested a separate, a separate district for EMS that would allow it to encompass areas outside of the hospital.
It's got to go to the voters.
Yeah, I know.
It's got to go to the voters, there's no doubt.
It's just a matter of how it gets included.
I mean, I feel fine moving on, unless you have more questions. The answer very simply is, we could do a stopgap measure, where we'll continue to provide the service we are, and we'll ask the citizens of east Custer County to make a donation, not a tax, a donation. I mean, but anyway, that's a stopgap measure, it will work, and we can do it.
Whatever it takes, okay, very good.
Ms. Kelly, in your opinion, could there be a ballot initiative to expand the hospital district?
Yeah, sure, I mean, there could.
And would the entire population of the county have to vote on that?
No, just this area, the area that you're.
But if that occurred, and we just expanded what's there right now, they would be taxed at the full.
That's right.
And that's, therein lies the issue, we need to figure out how to separate that, so you only pay for.
Ken, I'm not.
Because I'm with you 100% in terms of not paying for hospital services that you're not receiving here, so that makes sense not to do that.
But I'm not sure that the entire seven mills is an issue. I've, we've never had that conversation with anybody.
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
You can't separate that out?
No, I'm saying, if we, if we expanded the hospital district to include all of Custer County.
You can tax them on seven mills.
And you would, then tax seven mills. That's not teasing anybody out, right?
Just forcing them into the hospital.
If we could, we're very prepared and in detail to discuss this at the meeting.
Yeah, let's do it at the meeting.
Yeah, because this is going to take a long time.
Yeah, I get that, but he's not going to get his answer at your meeting today. We're just trying to, he asks, is there a chance to do that? I think there is.
We will find a fairer solution. How's that?
Somebody's got to help the result, that's it.
Absolutely.
Further public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Unfinished business, gentlemen?
I have.
Nor do I.
No.
New business? We will allow public comment on each of the items prior to taking a vote, and we are, first item of business today would be the second reading by statute, by title only, of the fire ban ordinance. Pull that document up, counsel, I would.
I don't have it, so I.
Okay, hold on just a second then, and I'll pull it up. And I struggle a little with, I mean, it is a fire ban, but the document is an ordinance restricting open fires and open burning in the unincorporated areas of Custer County, and also including the incorporated towns of Silver Cliff and West Cliff. We had our first reading February the 4th, and that was posted, so we are prepared to have the second reading by title only. Counsel, would a motion to that effect be in order?
No, not, not once I read it, then a motion would be, when it was first read, it was approved at the first reading, now, by reading the title and making a statement that there have been no changes to it since the first reading, now, you're in a position where you adopted to do that.
Then we can move to adopt.
So, if it's all right, I'll just say for the record that Custer County Ordinance Number 20-01, which was first reading, and I, what was the date?
February 4th.
On February 4th. It's been published, the statutory time period has passed, so now it's back before the Board of County Commissioners for final reading by reference to title only, and the title is, "The Board of County Commissioners of Custer County, a political subdivision of the State of Colorado, and Ordinance Restricting Open Fires and Open Burning in the Unincorporated Areas of Custer County, and Also Including the Incorporated Towns of Silver Cliff and West Cliff." No changes having been made, it's ready for your approval, if that's what you choose to do, adoption rather, today by motion.
Group's pleasure.
I move we adopt the resolution. Ordinance 20-1.
Your second?
My second.
They're moving second to adopt Ordinance 20-1, the aforementioned ordinance restricting open fires and open burning. Discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of adopting Ordinance 20-01, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose your name, motion carries.
Okay, Jane, you want to pass that? I'm assuming that's the original.
Yeah, that's the one that needs your signature.
And again, just for the record, this is being done pursuant to Colorado Valley Statute, 30-15-406 and 30-15-407.
27. Tip call.
Kelly, will this be posted on the website after it's signed into?
Yes.
Okay. And where it was, it was posted in the courthouse before, or was it on the website the first?
After this meeting.
Okay.
And Kara, just for your information, when you send this to the Tribune, it's just the title itself, not the whole body of the documenting, it just published the title.
Okay.
So, we can just reread the, or send the motion?
Pardon me?
Send the motion itself, or the rereading the statement you just made?
The, the title of the ordinance should be published again, and then the language that it was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners.
Could you just draft up a Word document and send it to her, and then she can send that on?
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, next item of business consideration of joining the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Ron, welcome, good morning.
Good morning.
You're welcome to come up, or you can sit right there, either one's appropriate.
I'll be fine, I'll come through and give everybody a seat. How are you, sir? Good, how are you? Doing well.
Was the sun still shining in West Cliff?
Yes, it was.
So, for our Wetmore folks, would you introduce yourself to the group and your title, sir?
Sure, I'm Ron Beckner, I'm actually a board member and treasurer on the Custer County Chamber of Commerce. What I'm here today to do is to propose to the county about being, I mean, a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to give you guys a little history of where we come from. Last January, when they asked me to continue on the board and to be a treasurer, I looked at the books and looked at the attitude of what the county used to be towards the chamber, and I pretty much told the group, we either make some major changes or we close our doors, because we cannot afford to stay open. An idea was proposed that we redo our website, which we have done, it is called FindItInCusterCounty.com, and we produced commercials for each and every single one of our top-level members that also went into FindItInCusterCounty.com. Now, here we are, almost a year later, because that started in April of last year, but this January, when we did our P&amp;L, we had increased our membership by 72%, and the website had 57,000 hits last year, and we were not even pushing it. That's a 4,500-hit average on that main page for FindItInCusterCounty. This year, we have reached out, we will have FindItInCusterCounty now on the screen at the theater. It will also be in the Central Colorado Magazine. We are also reaching out to Fremont County, Pueblo County, and the southern counties and beyond to make sure FindItInCusterCounty is going to be really publicized. We also have teamed up with the Board of Tourism, the Tourism Board, and we now have that website connected to the Colorado Tourism Board site, which is over 13 million people that go there and look at Colorado as a place to visit. What I would really love to do, and I did send you guys emails, we do have the town of West Cliff that joined, we also have the town of Silver Cliff that joined, I have their commercials that I sent in an email, so you can see that. Hopefully, you guys have been able to get on and look at FindItInCusterCounty.com, but it is something that we are very proud of. We have come a long way in a short period of time, and we would love for the county to also be a part of this group.
Okay. I did not see a schedule of membership dues, can you talk to that?
I can. So, our top membership right now, we're having what's called a sweetheart deal, we're halfway through the year, because our membership starts in July. I think it's the best time to do that, because that's when our businesses are doing the best in business, not doing it in January. But here we are in February, so we are saying, hey, we're halfway through the year, it's $175 for the top membership, which is a Crestone level, and with that, you will get the commercial and FindItInCusterCounty.com. So, if you look at FindItInCusterCounty, everybody has their own tile, if you will. And when you click on that tile, the commercial's there, and the website is there. So, we are driving people right to everybody's door.
Is the 175, is that a normal annual, or is that just for the regular?
That is for the six months, so this is, this is the half-price deal, we don't.
So, the normal would be?
350. 350, yes, sir.
Mr. Chen, I move that Custer County, join the Chamber of Commerce for the rest of this year at 175, and review each year thereafter.
I'll send in the motion. We're moving second, the Custer County, join the, is it Custer County Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, sir.
Discussion?
Okay, I got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Now that we've got the opportunity to discuss it, Chamber of Commerce, I've always viewed as a bunch of businesses getting together to promote, businesses and towns, I've always viewed that. How many other counties join the Chamber of Commerce? Is it a normal thing that counties do that? Because what are we, what's our business? You know, we're not in business, we're a different animal.
You are a different animal, and in fact, so are chambers. You know, if you really start looking at chambers, and I think you're bringing up a really good comment, Commissioner Kenda, is, you know, because of social media, because of the way the world has evolved, if you will, it has changed, and I think that's the reason that we have become so successful with this FindItInCusterCounty. FindItInCusterCounty, you guys are Custer County. What are we trying to do here, not just for our businesses, but also for our government? When we get people to come and visit here, they're buying from our business people, but they're also paying those taxes as they come in. For me, as a board member of the Chamber of Commerce, to ask you guys to be part of that process, I don't think is out of line. How many have done it? I don't know, I have not even looked at those demographics at all, to be honest. Honestly, I don't care. I live in this county, and I'm asking you all to be part of this process.
What is, what's your expectation that we do? What do members normally do? They promote their business?
Yep.
And they physically do something?
Absolutely.
We go to a lot of meetings, we do a lot of things.
Sure.
Outside, not just in Custer County. Our job has to include working outside the boundaries of Custer County to bring issues in and help understand and do better things with other agencies like the Action 22, or PRO 15, the county organizations, Frontier Pathways, and stuff. So, what would your expectation be that we do, where all we are is a figurehead that you get to put on a Chamber billboard?
Well, I would hope that you guys would help advertise FindItInCusterCounty.com to really promote, promote our county and the businesses there. So, as you're going outside, make sure that you're pointing to that aid, check and see what we're about.
We do that anyway, I think, and I do.
There you go.
When we talk to Action 22.
And you tell them to.
It's about a county.
And you do tell them to go to FindItInCusterCounty?
But we don't have to pay 350 for the privilege to do it. Maybe we could use 350 for other things, that's all I'm asking.
Okay.
How do we?
You know, I think it's.
Got it for free right now. Except now, we have to pay you to say the same thing.
And that's great, and that's why we're bringing it up here. I see somebody raising their hand, and I'm going to hold my thoughts right now, let's hear it.
I did a quick Google search of Canyon City Chamber of Commerce.
Be on it.
What's that?
Yeah, go ahead.
And actually, Fremont County, Fremont County Government is a part of that, and when I'm trying to zoom in, their website is not as robust as this one is, because I've actually been on this website, it's very good. So, it just says community and civic organizations and government, so it doesn't point you anywhere, but it, to answer the question that you asked, does anybody else do this? I just did a quick Google, I haven't Googled anybody else, but I just Googled Canyon City, and so it says Fremont County Government, so they must pay the dues to.
Go ahead, Mr. Chen.
And I? I haven't asked over this, I mean, we fund multiple organizations that help bring citizens outside of Custer County into Custer County, because every time they come in here, they leave a footprint. The footprint is buying gas, buying food, staying at our hotels, visiting this wonderful place that we live. We've helped many organizations that do that, tourism, for example. I think this is an absolute brainer, and I'm amazed that we have any negative discussion about it.
Not negative, I'm just asking for.
Oh, okay, that's fine, I'm not, I'm not picking on you, Bill, that's a good question, very good, but to me, this is an absolute no-brainer.
I just never, my point was, do other counties do that? What do we get for the 350?
It's a fair question.
What do they do with the 350?
It's a fair question.
They buy, they buy in cars.
And Ron has told us that a few times.
So, I mean, the website didn't come for free, and our doors and lights have to stay open, because we got to pay our bills. Thank goodness for what I'm saying, the increase in membership, and us actually providing a value for that cost of membership.
Have we not donated any money to the Chamber before, ever?
I don't, I don't know, I can tell you, since I've been on the board, we've never come before and been asked for anything.
So, if I understand correctly, the $175 is a membership from now until July 1?
Yes, sir.
And then your membership year starts again?
Yes, sir.
And is 350 the Crestone level for a year long?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion? Any other public comment? Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor of joining the Custer County Chamber of Commerce?
May I?
You may.
What's the other level?
So, there's the Crestone level, then, under that is called our Challenger level. That one does not include the commercial, but you still get the business tile. And then below that, we go into our nonprofit level.
What's the commercial do for us? I didn't quite understand. I didn't quite understand.
And again, Bill, you'd have to have gone on the website to kind of look and see what the commercials are. But it's a teaser, if you will, to drive them to the website. I want to drive people to your door to tell them who you are, who Tom is, who Jay is, what Custer County, what your government represents to the people that either visit and/or live here. They can do it already, I'm sure, but I'm looking for you to be part of this community organization.
I'm all for giving you some cash. I'm just trying to figure out what-
And I want to give you something for that cash versus just taking your money and saying thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now I am coming.
Great.
Seems like if you're going to do it, which I think there's better ways to spend even $350, you should go in at the nonprofit level. They can link to your website and be done with it.
Okay. Other comments? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of joining the Custer County Chamber of Commerce at the Crestone level for the remainder of the membership year? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
And we can always withdraw our great support.
Absolutely.
Do you know Vernon Roth, our IT Director?
I do not.
Okay. You'll come by sometime, I'll take you over and introduce you to him. I'm assuming there'd be some kind of collaborative effort there to-
Great.
-get our information. I mean, I know you produce these commercials yourself-
I do.
-but he may have some additional information or-
Very good. Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you. Next item, discussion of the water line at the Saddle Club. My assumption is that, Mr. Ron, you're also here to speak to that on behalf of the Saddle Club.
Switching hats now.
That's why we put these back-to-back, so-
I'm Ron Beckner. I'm also a board member and vice president of the Wet Mountain Valley Saddle Club. And we have a contract with the county on the fair board side. And we've had water issues now for several months. We did do a temporary fix, so we're not without water anymore. But I know at the last roundtable meeting that we had, we were given a proposal by the Round Mountain Water District, which we took to the board, and the board unanimously turned that down. So we have done that. I do know that the county and the Wet Mountain Valley Saddle Club have concurred that we both own the four-inch line coming off the main, off of Main Street. And I know that we've talked to some experts in water, and we're looking at coming off of that four-inch tap that we currently own jointly and increasing that up to a six-inch main and running that up. I can tell you, I did price the pipe for that C900 six-inch. And currently, I was told that it is $4.06 a foot. It's either $4.06 or $4.05. Either way, the gentleman did say that at the beginning of the year, all pipe supply folks increase their prices, that we should probably wait till April and go back and find out the new price, because nobody will buy at their high prices in the first quarter, quote-unquote. I would propose that we have our proposal to buy our material in April, ready to go, so we can start doing our dirt work as a joint group starting May 1st. I think at that point, that's going to give us just enough time to get that pipe in, and that will give the Saddle Club time for us to do the appropriate things that we have to do in our pens and labor to get everything ready for this pro-rideo coming up in July.
I know at one time, there was some discussion about the lease contract that the county has with the Saddle Club. And there was language in there that addressed whose responsibility it was to maintain and repair the utilities, including water in this case.
Yes, sir.
And I looked at that a little deeper, actually asked council for some opinions about that contract. And I can't remember, I had this discussion with George Coons yesterday, but I think it was prior to you getting there. So if I'm repeating myself, just say, yeah, we talked about that. Item number three in that lease contract says that it is understood that, at the present time, said water and electricity are being furnished with expenses shared equally between the lesser and the leasing. No reissues with that, right? We know the water line is billed to the county, the water bill is sent to the county. We're the account holder on that. I'm trying to find, it's kind of lengthy, but I'll try to get to it. The right privilege of using all electrical lines and other electrical facilities on the above-described premises with all expense of extension of electrical repairs, service, repairs, and maintenance, including water, assumed to by the less E. I agree with that, but we've never really talked about, and we didn't talk about it in our workshop, that that really says that the county is responsible for the maintenance and repair of the water lines and ground that we're leasing, correct? Which would be the fairgrounds, in essence.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So I wonder if it is appropriate and/or necessary for this board to also take a position on Round Mountain's proposal? I'm not sure. The proposal was never really addressed specifically to the Saddle Club or to the county or to the fairgrounds. It was a proposal to be considered. So I don't know, council, I doubt you've even seen that proposal. I just, I get the feeling that because it wasn't addressed to us, we don't need to officially oppose that proposal? I don't know.
I am not sure. I mean, I was present there during that discussion where it was thrown out, and that's how they wanted to do it. But I'm not sure who the proposal was directed to.
And that's why it wasn't to any specific-
And it may not have been directed towards anybody, but in that proposal, when they're saying the Saddle Club will give us 15-foot of easement land-
Right.
-they'll pay for the property, and you'll pay for the labor-
Right.
That pretty much pointed it to us, that they wanted to put it in ours. They wanted to give us, give them land, and they wanted us to pay for our taps.
Right.
That pretty much set it up for me, that, yeah, I'll take it on board.
Well, with that being said, I would move that the county also reject Round Mountain's proposal.
Assistant.
We move in a second to reject Round Mountain Water and Sanitation District proposal pertaining to the installation of an eight-inch water line through the Saddle Club and, well, through the Saddle Club property, even though we lease it, still Saddle Club property. Further discussion?
Yeah, didn't they remember that discussion, too? Didn't they, seems to me, they were looking at how to modify that. Weren't they going to go back and do something to give back to us?
No, they, Round Mountain has not.
I thought Round Mountain did. I thought he-
No. No, they had indicated if we wanted to go to a board meeting and negotiate any part or parcel of that contract, we could.
They were open to a counter offer, if you will.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, they weren't going to do anything.
They want to have an eight-inch line that connects on both ends. And then didn't necessarily, you know, there's ways you could do that. I thought he was going to come back, but maybe not.
No. That was their starting and ending.
Right. Go ahead, sir.
My thought about the proposal after I gave it, I sort of ruminated for a while. It seemed to me that Round Mountain was attempting to get us, the county entities, to enhance their line to an eight-inch line for their benefit to bring water up to the Saddle Club. Excuse me, not Saddle Club, Saddle Ridge subdivision. And I just didn't feel that was appropriate. I mean, you know, if they want to kick in some of the money to upgrade what we're going to do to what they need, I would say, let's joint venture, let's get something done. But I thought the proposal they laid on the table was one-sided, onerous, and inappropriate for what they needed to do.
They did, you're right. They did offer to pay for the parts, right?
Well, the pipe.
The pipe, right.
The pipe. That was it.
And that there would be taps, you could tap off of that.
That we'd pay for it, whoever goes to that. If they would have made concessions for the tie-ins and the taps and those kind of things for us upgrading to eight-inch, I would say, that's a win-win deal for both sides. But that seemed to me to be a very one-sided proposal, and I was not in favor of it.
Yeah, I didn't, you're right about that. But I got the impression they wanted to negotiate and figure out what would be a, something we could come to agreement with that might be better for both of us. I don't know. Is it worth, my point is, is it worth still talking to them about what would be a better way of approaching that before we cut and mark?
I think we could reject the proposal they laid on the table-
That's right.
-and go back to them and say, we would like to continue a discussion to see if we can come up with an equitable way of handling this. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And I'd like to comment on that, if I can. I feel that we are under a time crunch here, and for us to sit there and go back and forth with this water district and try and come up with something that's appeasing to them is a waste of our time. And that's just my personal opinion.
That's good.
Okay. Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of rejecting Round Mountain's proposal? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. I will move forward then on trying to schedule another workshop, and certainly will invite Round Mountain. And then we will try to move forward. Again, your target date, I think, of April, correct, or May?
To have our proposals and everything ready to go for material, so we can start construction May 1.
Okay. I will continue to work with Mr. Hyde on that end of the excavation project. If you and Mr. Lidengood could work on the materials list.
Yep.
And obviously, Mayor Winkie is out of the country, but I'm going to reach out to their town manager and see about an easement on the east side of Fourth Street.
Perfect.
I don't know, did we talk about that at that workshop, or was that afterward? We went down and looked at Fourth Street. We're thinking now that we're going to propose that we move to the east side of Fourth Street for the trench and not have to cut the asphalt all the way down Fourth Street. So obviously, Town of West Cliff's going to be a player in that, so I will presume that as well.
And they wanted to make sure they resurface whatever they're going to do after we did this.
Well, yeah. We're going to be, now we're 15 feet north of that overlay project. We went and measured it.
That was the whole.
Yeah, so, okay. Anything else, sir, on that?
The only other thing that, and I think it's something that we can discuss later, but starting in 2018, and this is kind of referring back to the Section 3 of that lease and the repair responsibility, if you will, when that line broke, it was in the area of the leased property. And because of the bill that you guys received from Round Mountain Water, it turned to us, and we, of course, didn't have the monies for that, and we had not really dissected that lease at that time either. But starting in August of 2018, we paid an initial $3,850 with the agreement to installments every quarter of $321 or $371, whatever we were able to pay every quarter until that bill was paid off. In November of last year, we paid that off for a total of $7,700 that we paid for that water repair leak to the county, because I know you guys paid for that bill. At a future date, I, as a Saddle Club member, will be discussing with the county our lease agreement, and hopefully, some kind of financial considerations as we move forward as a joint team for the repairs of that line.
Okay. Just a comment from where I sit. Looking back, probably would have been a different discussion. I think there's issues with that lease. I mean, we could have certainly gone in and cut that line and repaired it and shut it off right there and been well within the legal ramifications. There's nothing in that lease says that we need to continue a water supply to the Saddle Club. There's all kinds of holes in that. That was written, you know when. So the other thing is, I think, I just want to caution the Saddle Club. I might as well lay it out here, in no sense beating around the book here. I don't believe, moving forward, that this new water line project is going to be a financial equal split. If you believe the Saddle Club can step up and pay exactly half of the cost of this and the county pay half, then I'd say you're on solid ground to come back to us and challenge us on the $7,700. I don't think that's going to be the case. I think that the county's going to bear the majority of the expense of this water line project, and I would certainly expect the Saddle Club to give that some pretty serious consideration. I think I've estimated this job at around $35,000. If the Saddle Club can cough up 17 grand, then I would encourage you to come back with that conversation. But if not, then I think we need to look at it as a collaborative, cooperative effort and say, yeah, we did spend the $7,700 when we shouldn't have, but we also understand now that the county's bearing the lion's share of this project. I don't know. We'll see how that all plays out. Maybe the Saddle Club is equal partners on it. I don't think they're going to be, but we'll see.
Sure. And I think that's fair, and I appreciate you saying that. Saddle Club is of the understanding that we believe that that lease is probably needing to be revisited, but I think that's a separate conversation, and that's something that we can look at and should look at in the future.
Right.
As far as, you know, any discussion with how we're going, I believe that you guys will probably take that lion's share as well, and we can work collaboratively. But I want to make sure that, you know, we believe that there's been some things that need to be discussed.
Well, there's more than just the two in any state. The fire district is also part of it.
Well, they're not owners. They'll be a subsidy.
They would be a subsidy.
And we're talking as owners of that line.
Cost to it.
Item number six in that lease, this encouraging for me.
Right.
It is further understood and agreed between the parties that if requested by either party, they shall review the lease and, if appropriate, modify the leases necessary.
Exactly.
Which, believe me, I believe in that.
And I know that, too, and that's why I said, we should probably go ahead and forward.
When was that established? It's been quite a while.
Oh, yeah. Well, it was renewed-
Back in '90.
When Mr. Camper and Mr. Flower signed it, 18th of May, 1994.
I didn't know you were out of school.
Just barely out of high school, 1994. Anything else, sir?
No.
I appreciate it. Thanks for driving down here, and I'm not trying to inflame the situation. I just know those are conversations that can be hard.
But we've all got our ground to stand.
They need to be had, so-
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Without objection, gentlemen, Chair would entertain any five-minute recess.
Sounds like a plan.
Recess. Meeting will come back to order. Let the record show, it is 10:36 on February 19. Next item of business is consideration of a resolution for the airport grant. Commissioner Canda, would you like to take the lead, sir?
Sure, and both of these are wrapped up into one action.
So you moved that up?
We did move it up, yes. That was an amendment.
Sorry. So that was before I got here?
That's-
We didn't get your permission.
I see.
And with respect, sir, they are on here separately, and I think they need to be dealt with.
Well, they need to be dealt with. I'm just saying, I'm going to talk to both of them. So anyway, yeah, we need to talk about that. We did receive, just for the public's information, we applied for a grant to put the automatic weather observation system in at the airport some months ago, and through the Colorado Department of Transportation Aviation Division, or not exactly, the division it was called. And we worked hard on that, and we're successful in receiving that grant. We've got a year to execute it. And I'll read what we had gotten in the grant award letter, has a summary of the grant award terms and conditions. So it comes up, they require, and I'm going to put it in my words rather than reading the language and- the language in the package. First of all, formally, we have to formally request assistance in the form of the grant now, and that's part of the action. Two, we got to designate a project director, and I had been the lead on it, so they put my name on that, and that might accept that to happen. And authorizes the project director to act in all matters related to the project, the work project proposed, including executions of the grant agreement and any amendments. And three, to make available our matching fund in a timely manner. Part of this grant was 10% match, so the total cost of the grant and what we awarded, what we're awarded was $200,000 from the state, and the airport board had budgeted the grant match of $22,000, so it's a $222,000 project. And four, accept all guideline procedures, standards, and requirements as applicable to perform the grant work and approve the grant agreements submitted by the state. So the package included our application, it included the resolution that they wanted us to vote on. That's one of the actions that follows here, the consideration of the AWAS, the resolution for the airport grant. And I talked to Kelly, and I guess what the number is going to be?
Well, I thought it was going to be seven, but I think since you have done one, two, I think we have to go with five, and then yours will be six and seven. Roughly.
We can't assign them, or then that would be in numerical order.
I think so. Clamp, is that?
I'm sorry, I was working on something else.
So, there's two other resolutions that we're working on right now that we've given five and six.
Okay.
But we've not done those yet. So, I was going to, I told Bill, this would be seven, but I think his actually needs to be five, because I don't think we can.
I thought we already had a five.
Well, we don't. We were, they're proposed resolutions to act on today, but Kelly's saying, since we haven't acted on them.
Well, is it that important to have them in chronological order, even if we're doing them all?
Is that going to be today?
Yes.
So, we could, I think we could go ahead and do that then.
That would be my recommendation, just keep the numbers where they're at.
So I think seven would be good.
This will be seven?
Twenty dash seven.
So we want to approve the resolution 20 dash seven?
That would be the number we'll assign.
We'll assign to it at the time. And so, do we want to make a motion to that effect now?
Well, as I indicated, there are two separate things. Let's deal with this grant application first.
Right.
And then we'll.
And you want to do the.
Later, yeah.
Okay, and then the grant itself has, we get to it. So the exhibits that came with the grant summary and awards, the grant itself, so what are you looking for here, Tom? See here?
We're going to probably have to adopt this grant award letter by resolution, is my understanding, counsel. Do you have an opinion on that?
Yes.
By resolution.
Right, we have to, we have to accept the grant first, right? Is that what you proposed?
Well, the signature.
Go ahead.
Signature pages are to authorize the grant.
That's right. But that occurs after, I believe, that's, I'm not so sure that that's the word, isn't
Well, the AWAS, as I understand it, is simply signifying the point of contact, one-page document.
That the resolution you're talking about, yeah. But it includes all the things I just mentioned, and the guarantee for Custer County would be that, it's just that person, the project, we want to do it decent.
Yes.
Okay, so.
This document here, we'll have a resolution for this. Obviously, it is a resolution, so that's a separate item.
That's a resolution, that's seven. So we're going to have a separate resolution for this one. So that would be dash eight?
Counsel, this, did you have a chance to look at this contract, C.D.O.?
I did.
So it's, it's a grant, the signature page is to authorize the grant, meaning we're accepting this grant.
Right.
But that was.
Does that need to be a resolution?
No.
I know I just asked you that question, but.
I don't think it does. This is part of the contract, after we go through the resolve that we're requesting the three, four things that I just mentioned.
I think if we're going to allocate any county funds, we need to do that.
But that's right.
Correct. All right. And we do not have a resolution written to that effect, so.
Funds are set aside. I thought, the way I read it, this whole exhibit B or their resolution allows that once we authorize that to happen, I believe the project manager can sign the contract. I did that exact same thing when we did the contract for work on the project.
And I have no problem with that whatsoever, once we've agreed to it.
Right, once we agree.
And then whoever is the signator on it, I don't think that's really important.
So, don't we want to just agree, don't we want to just pass this resolution? That would do it.
I don't have a problem with that.
Read, yeah, read it. I think it does. That's why they have that resolution written.
Exhibit B you're talking about, right?
Right.
Yeah, I read that, and I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I just didn't care for the format it has.
Well, it's different, but their format.
Wouldn't you?
Yeah, it's hard to read, but.
And I discussed that, too, and he mentioned the format, and also the fact that we've got to change the path, not an exhibit, it's a resolution. But it covers every item that we've discussed, and it authorizes that project manager. Once we authorize that guy to have the authority, then.
Well, that's you, yes. That's what it says. And I'll follow that.
Okay.
Because you're the right person to do that.
That's why I thought it was one, one resolution.
Yeah, I, certainly, your points well taken, Commissioner Kanda. I believe if counsel agrees, that that would be the most prudent way to go about that, is to adopt this resolution, but I just don't like the way it's written. It's not in the right format, and so I struggle with that. Do we need to rewrite that? Can we adopt the language of the resolution and then change the format?
I would suggest, I think the state's pretty particular about the forms they use, so about, the only thing we could do, if Karen can do it, is to change the caption of it, Custer County Ordinance Number.
That's what they are.
Our Ordinance Resolution Number, what, 20 point, whatever, 20 dash 07.
And it's the same thing, if you look at, there's four other exhibits in there. One is an example letter. These are suggested forms, but the form itself is the exact form for this resolution that they expect per the state seal.
We get these from time to time, and it's, it's specific to one issue. It's not a resolution that has applicability other than, excuse me, for this purpose, so I, my suggestion is we just go with their wording, huh?
And leave the format like it is, or?
Sure.
Yeah, it's not one that, I would draft one this way if it was.
Right, leave their routing numbers and everything at the top of the resolution page?
Yeah, just leave all of it the way they've got.
Completely.
Just put our number up at the top and take off the exhibit language.
And the C.D.O. page, the header right here.
That's what I was just asking about, to leave that routing number and that information Well, I would move we adopt Resolution 20 dash 07. Boy, we're so far out on the lam here. We don't even have a title for this resolution, counsel. That's what I'm struggling with.
I would call it the.
Resolution, and we'll add the number after the word resolution, and then we can adopt it as resolution Exhibit B to the proposed grant and award information for the AWAS system.
So you, what it is, we're accepting the grant terms and conditions.
Right.
For the AWAS system.
And I suspect, counsel can tell me I'm wrong, we add the number after the word resolution, and we put under that our definition of what it is.
Sure.
But we don't change the format of the whereas's, that kind of thing. I think we ought to be just fine.
Weeks, yeah. The resolution, so we're adopting, accepting.
Again, my motion was to adopt Resolution 20 dash 07, title yet to be written.
I'm not going to support that, too, without its title.
Okay, then.
The title should make reference to a resolution concerning an agreement between Custer County Political Subdivision of the State of Colorado and Colorado Department of Transportation, Aeronautics Division, yeah, Colorado Aeronautic Board. Let's sneak in the language about political subdivisions.
If you guys want to hammer this out today, I'm fine with that. Chair would also entertain a motion to postpone, whatever you want to do. I just think we're going off half-cocked, and I don't like it, but nonetheless.
You know what? It doesn't, there's no urgency. We can talk about the language and then adopt it at the next meeting.
I don't have a problem with the language, it's the format.
Well, I don't think, personally, I wouldn't rewrite it, because it is what they, they are, they have gotten very picky. And Caitlin pointed that out to us, and I would need.
Well, again, I don't have a problem with the language, it's the format. I'm not comfortable passing a resolution without a title.
Oh, no, yes, yes. No, we need that.
So if you want to hammer those details out this morning, Chair would be willing to go through those steps.
It's in front of us, we've discussed it.
Let's get it.
Let's do it. We know the number, all we need to do is really come up with the title, unless I'm missing the point.
No.
So the motion, it's not on the floor, because it didn't get a second, but the motion was to adopt Resolution 20 dash 07.
And we want to put a title.
With a pending title. Is there a second?
I'll second it, so.
Then put a second, and to adopt Resolution 20 dash 07 with pending title, discussion. Counsel, you want to make another stab at it?
Yeah, let me put something together, and I'll send it to you here.
Okay.
I'm doing the other one on the ordinance right now, so I'll get this.
So we're adopting a grant to execute the, our, their AWAS system for the airport, construction of the AWAS system for the Custer County Airport.
My feeling is the actual title of what we approve is let, we need to defer our records so we know what it is we're approving. Hang on one second. But I'm okay approving and pending the title, because we're not changing any substance of the actual language of what we're approving. So one of the few times where we could say, let's do it while it's still being discussed, we could approve it. I'm not having an issue with this.
So page two of nine is the document we're looking at signing, is that correct?
No.
No, I'm looking at.
No, the resolution, Tom, is what you're saying.
Exhibit B resolution.
That authorizes them, then that all this takes place later after the fact.
Right.
By the project director.
So Commissioner Prince, are you suggesting we move forward, take action on this now prior to having the title written?
That's the motion on the floor. Yeah, I don't have a problem if we just add a title, an appropriate title, although we could do it right this minute. What title should we put on this?
Well, that's what I was asking, counsel.
I can put together a title and send it to you.
Well, we're sitting here waiting.
Let's do it right now, Clamp.
Okay. Well, if somebody else wants.
I'll write it.
Okay.
Obviously, Custer County Political Subdivision of Colorado.
Yes, a resolution between Custer County Political Subdivision of the State of Colorado and the.
C.D.O. Aeronautics Division.
And that's really all it asks us to say. Just making reference to an agreement, and the agreement itself is set forth.
That's it.
Yeah.
I'm doing what, sir? Sorry, I was writing.
No, I'm saying, just make reference, it's an agreement, and the body, the actual agreement is set forth below, so.
Yeah.
We don't need to go into more details to what the agreement is.
That's right, it's an agreement between us and them. And if you want to, I don't think we need anything.
So a resolution of Custer County Political Subdivision of the State of Colorado hereby.
A resolution concerning an agreement between Custer County and the.
Aeronautics Division of C.D.O.
C.D.O. Aeronautics Division, that's listed.
However, make reference to it in the.
Just, we just added the date.
The date's at the bottom of the document.
Is it?
Yeah.
But that's all we need. We don't have to go into more detail in the caption of it.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
And the title hereby enters into an agreement with.
A resolution concerning an agreement between Custer County Political Subdivision of the State of Colorado and the Division of Aeronaut, how do you want to?
Yeah, Aeronautics Division.
C.D.O. The way they do it, Tom, it's C.D.O. dash Aeronautics. They have that, their structure, organization structure that we need to find.
And that's all we need to say.
Further discussion? Public comment?
Question.
Go ahead.
This accepts the grant.
Uh, no.
This names a person.
This is authorizing Commissioner Kanda to be the project director.
And then he'll accept the grant later.
Right.
So that's what this does, is just sets the contact person.
Well, it does that, and it does those three things I mentioned, except the terms. The resolution has all those wrapped up in the body.
Designates Commissioner Kanda as project director. The Custer County has appropriated or will otherwise make available in a timely manner all funds.
Remember that.
And hereby accepts the guidelines, procedure, standards, and requirements described in the manual. Those are the three things we are.
And.
Signing resolution for.
And approve the grant agreement submitted by the state.
What line is that, sir?
Part four. Oh, it's down at the bottom.
No, this resolution itself.
Yeah, read it, where it says, accept the guidelines, down below.
Accept all guidelines, procedure, standards, and requirements.
And then if you read further, it says, and approve the grant agreement submitted by the state.
Right.
Okay. It's all part of it.
But your question, or your answer to your question was exactly right. This resolution is simply appointing Commissioner Kanda as project director.
Thank you so much.
Further discussion?
And just want to verify that this is, this is verification, that this is budgeted through the airport.
Yes.
This is not coming out of our general fund or anywhere. I just want to make that comment for the audience, regarding.
It's in the general fund, but it's through capital improvement.
Right.
It's not airport's capital improvement, because we rolled airport's capital improvement out of their airport fund into the general fund capital improvement.
Absolutely correct. I just want to make sure that we understand that this is a budgeted item, right?
Yeah, their capital improvement, let me look real quick here, I've got some aid documents open. Their cap, capital improvement in the general fund is $85,000, of which $22,222 is earmarked for this matching grant.
Right, I knew that, I just wanted to make sure that we were scratching money out of nowhere.
Further comment?
So, yeah, you understand?
Yeah.
It's not just one thing, there's those four things that we thought.
Hearing done, will proceed to vote on the adoption of the Resolution 20 dash 07. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed name? Kerry. Carrie. Then I would move that we strike consideration of the AWAS grant contract from the agenda. Does there a second?
Second.
Move a second into strike consideration of the AWAS grant contract from the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post name. Carrie.
Okay, so the mechanics now are to get this title put onto this resolution copied.
Can you convert it from PDF?
Yeah.
Just undo that?
Mm-hmm. So let me just go to Ms. Kara.
Kara, I also sent you the wording for the publication of the ordinance that was approved earlier.
Oh, okay.
You already have the PDF file.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
You've got a PDF file.
And I've got PDF, PDF file, I'm not sure if that's where.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of the REACH Air Ambulance Contract.
Commissioner Prince, would you care to take the floor? I'd be happy to, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've been in contact with REACH multiple times, I'll speak up, I'm sorry. Multiple times, as we have, we had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago when it came in to discuss a proposal that they presented to us. I felt that this could be a valuable service for the citizens and visitors of Custer County. So I took it upon myself to, I have a webpage, some of you may or may not know, I know you know because you commented on it, thank you. It's called Commissioner Prince, what's up? And I'd like to read what I put out to the community because I tried my very best not to bias the decision to either do it or not do it. So I just asked this question. I am, I'm just going to read verbatim what I wrote. The B.O.C.C. is considering REACH ambulance service for all the residents and visitors of Custer County for 2020. By the way, I'm depressing, this was November 28, 2019, when I did this. This service is available privately for between $65 and $80 for all members in a household. Privately, your membership covers you and your family worldwide. If the county subscribes to the service, the air ambulance service will be only in Custer County. The cost to the county to cover all Custer County citizens and anyone else needing air ambulance service in Custer County will be approximately $20,000 or under $5 per person. A community member at the local, we had a B.O.C.C. meeting and someone was talking to us about their cost. I digress, let me go back to this. A community member at the last B.O.C.C. meeting told the commissioners that he received a bill for over $45,000 for a one-time ambulance trip and he had no insurance. New paragraph. Please let me know if you feel that this would be a valuable use of taxpayers' money. Some feel that this is not an appropriate use of taxpayer money, while some feel it's a great service that the county could provide at a reasonable expense. What do you think? So I tried my best not to sway, I'm in favor, I'm not in favor, I just put it out there, what do you think? The responses I've gotten since then, 34 people either gave me a thumbs up or a heart, which is just clicking. But what I found was very interesting, I got 91 comments and several shares. Of the 91 comments, one person questioned how Air Reach could do it, they were skeptical. One person was opposed to it and 89 people said things like, "Great idea, great use of money, good plan, I support it," yes, and on and on and on for the other 89 people. So I felt this is something that would be beneficial to the county, so we, I pursued it and they sent us a contract and then we met with them to discuss the contract. The contract itself is different than what I wrote as the community. Because the contract itself says that any individual who resides in the boundaries of Custer County, as opposed, and I would, I took that as any visitor, anybody traveling through, would not be covered. I asked the question without negotiating, I just asked it because I put it out differently than what they sent to us, AirMedCare, which is REACH. How firm are you on that? And they encouraged me to come back with those words taken out. They did not agree to do it, they encouraged me. So we have a contract that we've discussed. The fee is, as I mentioned in my, in my Facebook, it's actually slightly higher, I put 20,000, exactly 20,274.49.
How much?
I scratched my head going, 49 cents. Really? Okay, anyway. So the rest of the contract, we discussed with them, there are a few things in here that probably ought to be, you know, reviewed. Counsel has looked at it. The important part about this contract, I'd like to just give some of the stipulations of how it works. It is only for life or limb emergencies to get a free ambulance ride, air ambulance ride, if they're available. The, how they determine if it's going to be free or if they're going to charge you depends on the severity of your condition. If EMS gets on scene and they say, "We need an air ambulance," you are covered, even if when they get to the hospital, what they thought might have been a cardiac event was indigestion. Okay? As long as somewhat, somebody feels that it's an emergency. If you call 911 and you give them enough description as to what is going on physically, "I'm sweating, I'm having terrible chest pain, I've got pain going down my arm," and the dispatcher feels that it is most likely a life-threatening event, they will dispatch the air ambulance. When EMS shows up, if they feel it's not the case, REACH will go back, not pick you up, but there will be no expense for that. So it needs to be a life-or-lim event. If you break a hip, for example, it may be immensely painful, but that is not going to, unless it's a life event, but under most circumstances it's not, REACH is not going to fly you for free. There, it is not exclusive, so we still have Flight for Life. If REACH is not available, Flight for Life will come. There's a lot of discussion on what Flight for Life charges, many times they just write off the entire cost. So is this a necessity? Absolutely not. Is this a luxury? Absolutely it is. But I feel personally that it would be a good benefit for the citizens and visitors of our county if we own any words, say, only residents, who make up anybody who lives within the county. I don't mean to ramble on, but the right question, I'll be happy to answer, my understanding of what this agreement is. Excuse me?
So non answering question. So FreeCom is now our dispatch center.
Right.
My understanding is they do not dispatch any air ambulance systems from dispatch rather than they do you must to come and decide whether or not to call.
Agreed.
When it was Custer County dispatch, it's different because we follow different protocols. If a patient said they have this and they have this and they have this, they would automatically launch flight.
Agreed.
My understanding is currently, because we are using FreeCom, that is not the case and they don't anticipate changing that to be utilizing that different type of triage system that we used in our county. They're not anticipating to change that, to do that.
Okay. Let me just reply to that for you.
Yep.
That is correct, what you just said. That is not the way, what REACH ambulance said is that if the dispatcher feels, they didn't really care about FreeCom or, they would put an aircraft, helicopter in the air if the dispatcher said it. Now, I understand our new dispatch system probably won't do that, they'll wait for EMS to get on it. So I concur with you.
So I also heard that you guys asked when REACH was in the room to write into the agreement that if EMS dispatches REACH, it would be considered medically necessary. Because that's the terminology that, in my humble opinion, working with AMR and REACH, actually REACH specifically over the last two years, they have never said that before. So when they said that in your meeting, I was astounded and quite pleased that they said they would be willing to write that into the agreement.
Thank you for that.
So I think it really, you need to make sure that it's written into the agreement because medical necessity is what determines if the bill gets paid or not. And the pilot doesn't make that decision, the crew doesn't make that decision. It's people in an office that are deciding to pay the bills who makes that decision.
So Lisa, what you just said is the EMS makes the call at the site, whether they're going to medically lift them out by.
If they need it, yes. If they need.
Not going to be, that's right.
Correct.
To be the call by the EMS group.
Correct.
Thank you for that. And if this is approved, if you don't mind, I'd like to get with you and ask for the proper medical terminology.
I would love to help to do that.
If it's approved, and we're not there yet.
Sure.
If I may, Mr. Commissioner, because we have funding on this, we do not have this budgeted. This would be extraordinary expense that we don't have budgeted. However, this is part of what the county does. Things happen all the time, a trunk breaks down, we've got to fix it, we need tires, we didn't have a budget for, whatever. Okay. So I met with Donna Hobbie and there is money available and she said, her terminology was, you know, we have the money, it's not, it will not be a problem if we took it out of the general fund to pay for. What I'm recommending, or suggesting, is that we do a budget entry, we turn back, we being the county commissioners, we have a discretionary fund that we use often throughout the year to help organizations that need money. It's just our way of being able to say, "You need 500 bucks or whatever, we can write a check out of this fund that's budgeted." Last year, we didn't use, 2019, we didn't use all of the money. Do you know how much we turned back? I can't, I was meant to ask and I missed it, I'm sorry.
13,000.
Okay, we turned back 13,000 because if we don't use it, it automatically goes back to the general fund. So what I would like to talk about in terms of funding this project is we, we agreed to transfer the 13,000 out of the general fund back to community outreach, which is the line item for the commissioners, and use that 13,000 plus 7,000 out of our 2020 community outreach to pay for this because I feel this would be an excellent opportunity for the citizens of the county. So that's kind of where I'm sitting at the moment and I'm open for discussion and if this gets killed, it gets killed, but I personally feel it'd be kind of like fixing a road. I mean, it's just a good benefit to our community for a minimal cost. Jack, could if you have some?
Hold off just for a second. So the chair would entertain a motion if it's appropriate or your desire?
Okay. I, I move that we counterpropose to AirMedCare, the contract that's presented to us, making their service available to any person who needs air ambulance service within the county, not just residents. With the modification that Ms. Drew will help me write, that there will be no cost if it's medically necessary as determined by onsite EMS personnel.
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
The move a second is to counterpropose REACH's submitted contract to include coverage of anyone in the county, not just residents.
Correct.
Discussion. I'm assuming for the price of 20,274.
The rest of the contract is fine. And of course, with Ms. Drew's suggested.
You want that in the motion?
Yes.
And to include Lisa Drew's assistance in drafting the language. Discussion.
I've got some thoughts.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Two things. Well, three. Three is, I think this is a great deal and I kind of understand how they get away with charging. So look, because they are working the insurance and to include, just so everybody understands my understanding, that if a tourist got nailed in the hardscrabble and they got airlifted out of here, they're going to airlift them out and can't say, "Are you a resident or not?" You can't say, "Give me a card on the helicopter," and then they do adjudicate it later with Medicare and any other insurance. And so that person is liable for any additional costs that could come, whereas a Custer County citizen would not be. That's the way I understood it.
Can I respond to that? And that is the way they originally proposed it. My motion is to take out the, anybody else. And just to respond, you're absolutely correct. I probably should have said that. They, they being REACH, will obtain as much insurance as they can. It's the incremental difference between what insurance pays and the cost of flight is what they will not assess.
So anyway, it sounds good and of course, we're always liable to increases in the future.
You don't have to renew it.
You don't have to renew it, it's a yearly deal. However, from my point of view, I, I have a mixed emotion here whether, why the county itself, you know, we, we do have an obligation to provide ambulance service, that's what we did way back when and had turned it over to the hospital district. I view this similarly, I had this discussion with you guys later earlier, that I still view this as a hospital district service that they, if they elected to do it, ought to provide because they have the authority to raise the money for those specific things, which we have not done yet, we haven't allocated yet. Which gets me to the third point is, we have, you pointed out rightly so, Jay, that we have a fund that goes for other unexpected expenses, one of which right now is hiring people for the sheriff. The lock, the cell in the sheriff's, the problem that we had with the jail right now needs to be fixed. And we never allocated, I don't know how much money that's going to be, it's going to be in the 30,000s of dollars, I think Sheriff was saying, something like that. So I think that's probably more immediate than this is right now and then maybe reconsider this next year or the next session. Or we discuss it with the hospital board in our next meeting, just what's the best thing to do for the citizens of this county overarching in discussion before we, and if that fails and we decide we don't, we still want to do that, then I think we can come back to this board and reconsider this motion. Do you mind? Go ahead.
If I may, Commissioner Candace, understanding you say you think that the clinic has the authority to raise money for this type of thing?
Well, they have money for ambulance, emergency services. I think it's within their jurisdiction to do that with this, if they elected. And that would fit in their bucket better than it fits in our bucket as a, as a mission.
Yeah, I certainly have some comments here as well. Let me pull this document back up. I didn't go there, sorry. So a couple of things I wanted to point out with this contract that we're considering. We're not considering this contract in its current form, is that a fair statement to you, Commissioner? Or Prince, sorry. I don't have a problem with the statement of the transport must be from a pickup location in Custer County. I don't think that was ever an issue. And then the second bullet point under covered individuals and transports, if the covered individual transported is uninsured at the time of transport, guardian flight will build the, will build the covered individual, well, they don't have, I get it, the covered individual meaning covered by our municipal site plan.
That's what I said.
Guardian flight will build a covered individual at a Medicare allowable rate for that transport. So the statement has been made that REACH would guarantee no out-of-pocket expenses for a transport. That would be true if they are a covered individual with our municipal site plan and that they have insurance. If they do not have insurance, then that statement is not true. Wanted to just point that out.
If you read the first paragraph, I'm not sure that that's correct. No. Now, they did say to us, because that question came up when they visited, well, because, what about if you don't have insurance, and they say, we take that into consideration, we may bill, we may write it off, but they're not out there to argue with that. Of course, of course, what's written in the contract is what counts, words are really nice, but a contract will supersede that, and when it comes to their financial problem, they go, someone may have said that, but that's not the answer. So, I don't know the answer, but if you read the very first paragraph of the contract, and I'm going to omit two words, well, I'll get it with the words and I'm going to omit the words. It says, this is the way they presented it, "Any individual who resides within the boundaries of Custer County, when transported by medical, medically necessary Guardian Flight LLC, a Medicare network provider, will be covered under the standard terms and conditions of the AirMed Network membership attached." And then it went on to say a few other things.
Yeah, except those two more points.
Yeah, and the first one says, "Transpats we picked up, obviously, they can't, they've got to be able to find a place to land, pickup location. If the individual transported is uninsured, at the time of transport, Guardian Flight LLC will bill the covered individual at the Medicare allowable rate for transportation." And we talked about that, and they said that they consider that a hardship, and I'm trying to read my notes, and they have often written that off completely, or sometimes just charged a normal amount, is the way I understood it.
But the fact is, uninsured, covered individuals could be billed at the Medicare allowance. That's the only point I'm trying to make there.
That's a benefit, and I agree with you.
Then secondly, I agree with, I think, where Commissioner Canada's headed. Obviously, not a budgeted item here, certainly there are ways around that. I philosophically think this is a good plan, opportunity for the citizens of our county. One could argue all day long whether it's the county's responsibility to do it, whether it's the clinic's responsibility to do it, I'm not interested in getting into that discussion, because the county is the one considering this. Doesn't mean that we couldn't take other considerations into account, but as of today, this is a county-generated approach, and so it is what it is, as far as that goes. But I did some estimating, I think we've probably at least temporarily forgotten some obligations that we're going to be faced with before the end of the year. I put a range in these, and then I came up with an average based on those ranges. As Commissioner Canada indicated, we are going to have to replace the locks in the jail, I don't believe there's any question about that. I think that's going to be, on the average, a twenty-five thousand dollar expense. I also believe that this water project is going to be around a twenty thousand dollar expense. I think we're looking at finishing the strategic plan, if that's what the commissioners decide to do, that decision has not been made yet, of probably seven to ten thousand dollars. We have fourteen thousand dollar liability against the broadband contract with Carmel that we have committed to, we paid seven thousand of that, we still owe fourteen thousand. So that, on the average, I think puts before us seventy-four thousand dollars that was not budgeted. If we put on top of that twenty-two thousand dollars for Reach, that puts us, in my opinion, at around ninety-six thousand dollars of unfunded expenses. If you have exceptions, or want to take an exception, though, I certainly would entertain that, because again, these are my estimates, Drew. The only firm figure in there is fourteen thousand dollars, we know that, we voted on that. Comments?
Yep, Reach is twenty thousand, not twenty-two.
Uh, sorry, yes, twenty thousand.
No problem, you just, you asked.
Yeah. You're exactly right.
I'm going to have a serious issue paying another ten grand for strategic plan to implement it. I, I've made a public comment that I feel that we should put a volunteer citizen group together to implement that, maybe with the help of Economic Development, who has a strong interest in this. I'm going to have a real hard time putting more money into that. The locks for the jails, I absolutely agree, an absolute necessity. This is not a necessity, and then I brought it up just now, I said it was not a necessity, it's more a luxury. However, it's an opportunity. We really don't know what the locks are going to be, we don't know how much, if anything, the sheriff's budget has for maintenance or repairs, so that may come out, some of that may be budgeted, it may be twenty-five thousand, maybe thirty-five thousand, maybe fifteen thousand, we just don't know. We asked yesterday, and I appreciate you making that call yesterday to find that out, and we don't know. So, yes, the cost of running a county is very expensive, there's no doubt about it. We run on close to an eight million dollar budget. We have always, always items come up that are non-budgeted, that need to take place, and we take, we take care of it. I mean, that's our, that's our job. I also feel it's our job to provide our, our citizens with the best possible, anything that we can provide, it's our job to do that, if it's feasible. I feel for five dollars a person, and again, I'm just going to go through the numbers, a hundred and twenty-five people commented, one person wrote on this, Ms. Bubas, if you don't mind me, has mentioned to me before that she wasn't in favor of someone saying I have two opposers, is that, is that okay?
Well, and I also mentioned that, who wouldn't say yes to free stuff?
Yeah, that's, that's...
I did mention that.
Right, so I have more than one poser, one came here, and there may be many other people who oppose this, I just don't know, but the ones who responded to me said, this is a valid, good use of county funds.
It's free.
So, I don't think, I don't think this is a particularly large amount of money, I think the other things need to get done also. I would vote in favor of it, but I would certainly understand if I was opposed to it.
Um, yeah, I guess one more comment, not to belabor and drag it out, but I, I support this whole concept, municipal site plan, I kind of did from the very beginning, I think it would be a great asset for the citizens of our community. I'm concerned about the funding, if we had budgeted, or if we can budget for this, in the budget hearing process in October, most likely, assuming that the terms of the contract were to our satisfaction, I would support this. I think it would be good for the citizens. Certainly have had a couple of comments about, do we have any business doing this kind of thing? I don't know that. I don't know that we do, and I don't know that we don't. So, with that, I would open up for public comment. Lisa?
A couple things, so, I don't know if any of you have spoken to the Southern Colorado RETAC, and asked them about their air medical utilization guidelines that they already have in place. So that'd be a question, a quick question I have for you guys. So, what that is, okay, so the state has eleven RETACs, they're appointed by the state, we're part of the Southern Colorado RETAC, includes five counties, Custer, Fremont, Pueblo, Briff note, and then Los Angeles. So those are the five counties. They develop through medical direction and through the SEMTAC, which is State Emergency Trauma Advisor Council, pre-hospital destination protocols, including air ambulance activation, okay? We have a very unique situation in Custer County, in that the location of Custer County is this nice little rectangle, almost kind of sort of, right? We have a, we have an ambulance service that is based out of Pueblo, we have one at the Colorado Springs, and we have now one at Salida, okay? Prior to Reach moving from Wennebys to Salida, we wouldn't be having this conversation, because they're simply too far away to be able to respond. So we have a situation now where, if a patient is anywhere between the Fremont County-Pueblo County line, right to EMS quarters, it's faster for the patient, most appropriate for the patient, to have a Flight For Life helicopter dispatched from the east, because they're four minutes faster by air than coming from Salida to the western part of county, okay? So the reason I say this is because we were just starting to have these conversations with Sheriff Byerly, when, so when the dispatch center was still here, as to how we were going to deal with a flight call east side of, of that line, if you will, or the west side of that line, because now Reach came into the, you know, they were not in the picture before they moved to Salida, right? Because from Wennebys, they're too far away. The air medical, the, there are very specific guidelines for air medical activation, and it, again, it's all about accessibility and, and location of the patient. I, I think this idea of a, of a subscription service is a great idea, personally, I think it's a great idea. But if you're talking about what's best for the patient, and you're saying you're going to cover all of Custer County residents, if I am at Tony's Pizza, having, having lunch, and I have a, I have chest pain, have a big heart attack, according to the pre-hospital destination protocols, I need to be calling Flight For Life, because they're closer than Reach's. So I just want to make sure that you guys do your due diligence, and, and, because that's a, it could be really hairy, it might not be, but when, what happens now is, Flight For Life now has skin in the game, and now they're really mad, because now Reach is getting into their territory, right? That's, let's just call it spade a spade. So if there's a call coming out of Custer County that should have been theirs, based off pre-hospital destination protocols, that are developed by the state of Colorado, then I think there's going to be issues, potentially, but maybe not. I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that. I also understand that there's a similar subscription service that Chaffey County has with Reach, and the question is, I have just recently, like in the last two weeks, heard that there are multiple lawsuits now with Chaffey County and Reach. I don't know if that's substantiated, I have no idea, that they were not expecting to receive bills for ambulance, for air ambulance service, and they have been, I don't know if that's substantiated, that's all hearsay, so I have no clue. But I would also ask you guys to look into that, to make sure that you're not putting yourselves in a situation where you might be liable for something that you didn't think you could possibly be liable for, that's all. One of the benefits that Hard Rockies has for their employees is they get a Reach membership. That's just a perk, that doesn't have anything to do with Chaffey County. But I think Chaffey County also has a contract with Reach as a county, because it was like twenty-two or twenty-four thousand dollars for them as well, it was like that same ballpark. So, I just want to make sure, again, I, I think on paper, it's a great idea. If, if you're up in the needles, or if you're up in the western part of the county, and you need an air ambulance service for five bucks a person, it's a screaming deal, you can't buy a cup of coffee for five bucks anymore, it's a heck of a deal. But the logistics of this county, I think, are a little bit of a challenge, so I just want to make sure, maybe you, listen, Kevin Weber, who's the medical director for, for AMR, for us, and again, those pre-hospital destination protocols are not negotiable, they're set forth by the RETAC, based off whatever the SEMTAC sends you. So, I just wanted to throw that in there to make sure that you're fully informed. Medical necessity is, again, a huge thing, that if you don't, aren't in healthcare, you don't know to say that. And it also says in the pre-hospital destination protocols that I'm looking at, same thing, if, actually, it says if fire or EMS comes to the scene, or sheriff's office, they can activate a helicopter if needed. So, that's the other part of this, but if, so, I, I'll be happy to share this with you guys, this is not private, by any means, I'll happily share you the hundred fifty-six page document of this Southern Colorado destination.
You need some library.
Well, yeah.
But I can call, I personally can call Flight For Life.
No, you cannot. Why not? You have to call dispatch.
I don't believe that's true.
You could...
You have to call 911.
I can pretend.
You, you, but you, here's what's going to happen, is regardless of where you are, if you're here, right here, it'll ping to you here, okay? Dispatch will know exactly where you are, and they're going to dispatch the most appropriate helicopter for you.
Which would be Flight For Life.
Right here, absolutely, it would be.
So, can I do?
Well, let me, go ahead, public comment, go ahead, Jackie.
I have heard that, the same thing, I, verifying, you know, what Lisa just said, and I didn't realize it was all the way up to quarters up there, but that, the people in Wetmore, that automatically, if it's called in, FreeCom is going to call based on their protocols, and their protocols do not include calling Reach for someplace that is closer to Flight For Life. Now, also, I know that Flight For Life is much more financially friendly to those who do not have insurance, because they are a not-for-profit organization. He did state that if you don't have insurance, you'll be billed at the Medicare rate, which is about ten or eleven thousand dollars, is what he said. So, you know, for the poor people that we're trying to help, if we're trying to help poor people here, because anybody, anybody can buy this service, that won't really help them a whole lot, but, anyway, I think that that's, you know, if they're not even going to call Reach, they're the problem.
Well, yeah, I think those protocols would have to be addressed.
Again, I, I think you're absolutely right. So FreeCom, right now, doesn't utilize EMDs, which is Emergency Medical Dispatch, which is what our folks did. They don't do that. So they're not going to dispatch an air ambulance unless somebody calls and says, send, I want Flight For Life, or I want Reach, or I want this, or I want that, I want AMR, I want this, they, they don't do that. Now, however, we pay them a pretty nice sum of money to provide services, and we have a voting membership now on the dispatch, on E-911 board. So it certainly is feasible for Shannon to say, you're going to do this, or we're not going to play any more.
Yeah, it'd be crazy to subscribe to them if they're not.
I, I would agree, yes, I would agree.
Yeah, okay. Further discussion or public comment?
Can I make just one comment?
Go ahead, sir.
One of the reasons that...
Thank you. One of the reasons I'm really into this is because of how rural our, our clinic is, and how our clinic is really not equipped to handle a life-threatening situation. So it's al- almost always a call for air ambulance if it's life-threatening, life or the... You know, if we had a, if we had a Salida-type hospital, this may not be necessary, we can get you there in an ambulance very quickly, but it just seems like economically a benefit for our county, if, if, it just seems very...
Well, and actually, our EMS program, service, is completely different from the clinic, separate, separate, okay? So in other words, if an ambulance goes to get somebody, they can't bring them to the clinic, they're not allowed to bring them to the clinic.
That's my point exactly. So if they bring them to a landing spot with a helicopter that's already en route...
Right.
We can get you to the medical facility that could treat you in a much shorter period of time. That's why we have helicopters.
Oh, correct, correct.
If we had a wonderful, big, huge hospital, and we could support, and we have the personnel, and an ambulance could take a four-minute ride to get you to the ER, and there's twenty doctors, I don't know, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
Then I would say, this probably is not necessary.
Sure.
But I think air ambulance in a rural place like ours is a necessity, and we have it. We're just talking about, is this a benefit that the county could help the citizens with? That's really the issue.
Further discussion?
I do, I think, you have anything?
Where does your money come from, or to put in the general fund? How do you get that money in your general fund, and who contributes to it?
Yeah, I, that's a good, good question. I asked Donna to draft up a sample resolution for the very thing, I can read that, but basically, we would have to adopt a resolution appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses and excess amounts of budget for Custer County. I'll just read this to you, I, I think it'll answer your question. Whereas Custer County has received unanticipated revenues and expenses done to, due to unforeseen circumstances during the 2020 year, and whereas additional revenue was received from sources other than the property tax mill levy, meaning coming from the general fund balance of twenty-two, whatever that figure is, twenty thousand dollars, that the county commissioners appropriate that money from the general fund balance.
From taxpayers from before?
Yeah.
Still taxes. I got a couple things, and then we're going to have a book.
Got you.
Lisa, how many air ambulances were called last year that actually resulted in somebody being lifted out of the camp?
You know, off the top of my head, I can't, I can't tell you, but I certainly...
In hundreds, thousands, or thousands?
For where, just this county?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm going to guess probably ten or twelve? I, I'm going to guess, I can get you that information, I don't know off the top of my head.
Fifty-four.
How many?
Fifty-four is my...
Fifty-four, in this county?
That's what I was going, fifty-four air evacuations.
From Custer County?
Yes.
So, and I would believe that, at that time, because we had a dispatch center that followed EMDs, which had very specific, if you have any kind of history and you're over sixty... EMDs, which had very specific, if you have any kind of history and you're over 60, 68 years old and you have chest pain, you're getting a helicopter moved. If you have this, if you have this, there's a long litany because of, this isn't a rural county, this is a frontier county, gentlemen. Not rural, you're frontier. It's a whole nother ballgame. So when you're out there in the middle of nowhere, gray hair, you said it, not me.
And the other question is, there's several ambulance services, you brought that up, that would be convenient in here, is that true?
Air ambulances right now?
Sure. Right now, if we got Reach, is there, what's the likelihood that Reach is going to be the only one that'll ever be used for an airlift out of here?
It could never, it could never be the only one used, because currently, the way the pre-hospital destination protocols are written for air ambulance, it's the closest, most appropriate dispatch now. So they would call Flight for Life.
So my point there is, a person that thinks he's got coverage because he's got a Reach policy isn't necessarily going to be free. He's going to be paying somebody else that's going to be trying to collect Medicare share, blah, blah, blah. So that's a point to consider. The other one is, it's insurance. We're free to buy insurance anytime we want, and this is a pretty good policy for 45 bucks for a county, I think, with just Joe Blow as citizen. And for another 50 bucks, you can get nationwide coverage if that's what you want to do, but that still doesn't guarantee you're going to fly on Reach anywhere. And so, so I think, overall, we don't have enough data right now. I don't think to make a decision that we're going to go do this today. I still believe that's something for the hospital district to consider, it's something for us to consider, what's best for the citizens of this county, what we should be doing in our meeting, our joint meeting. And we ought to, by the way, if you haven't joined me periodically, we don't have to wait for a crisis to get together to hospital. We don't wait for a crisis to get together with, ah, the fire department either. So I think, and given what Tom pointed out, and I did too, we have a lot of pressures on a budget. We only got $7 million for this county, period. And a lot of it's, you know, and it's nice that we're able to cut, and we agonize, the three of us agonize every time we go through budget here, to decide what to carve out, because we could spend every dime on roads if we wanted to, and people would be happy.
No, they would still be a part.
But there are other pushes, and tourism, things are a good thing. We heard the Saddle Club needs stuff, you know, all this makes around a community. We've got to keep priorities going here and work together on that. So I'm, right now, I cannot support saying, "Call me to do this," or today, but that's just my position.
The motion is to re, or to counterpropose their contract. Further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
No.
Nay, motion fails. Two to one vote. Thank you, Commissioner Prince, I appreciate your efforts in that area.
Thank you.
Certainly can be a topic of discussion, moving forward.
This isn't over, I think we all.
So the next item, business planning and zoning staff report, Jackie, you have the floor.
Yippee!
I'm not supporting a 15-minute recess, but maybe we won't.
I'm going to sit by my favor.
You're going to give hands to?
No, I have to sit by.
Hand it, ask the start, he kind of packs up because he's going to have to leave.
Okay, let's get to the first.
Cut to the chase, Jackie.
Cut to the chase. Did you guys see my report?
We did.
Okay, did you read, I know it was confusing. Did you read the thing from CDPH? So many years ago, there was a, a policy, and it was supported by the state of Colorado to let anyone, prior to 2000, have a variance for a chemical portable toilet, incinerating toilet, and they could be able to live on their property. Then when the state came back, they said, uh-uh. And so now the state is saying, anything that was allowed before 2000, you can have a portable chemical toilet. After that, you cannot. And they connected the plumbing code with the septic. So the state is saying that you have to have one flushing toilet in your dwelling, or you cannot live in there. You have to have a flushing toilet. Now, remember, you can haul your water, so let's not, we won't even fill up the tank. But they're not telling you that you cannot have a chemical toilet, they're telling you, you've got to have one flushing, if you want the other one to be chemical, fine with them. But it is now connected to the plumbing code. So we went backwards in time in 2014 and told everyone, "You must get a septic system." A lot of people complied, but I still have my hangouts, and so I did the list with the hangouts. And I'm not, uh...
Hangouts of people. Holdouts.
Holdouts, hangouts, holdouts. Hangouts probably wasn't appropriate.
Those are the folks that are not with a septic system.
Uh-huh. But I got a whole list of the people, then some of these are fairly decent-looking homes that do not have a septic system.
Are they living in a full house?
Yes, and they're living in, well, we don't care about full or...
Port-a-potty.
Uh-huh. And so 11 of them are getting residential status, which means that they get 7% property tax, because they're being counted as residents, and I disagree.
Meaning what?
I, everybody else, look at my list. I have a total of, what did I count, 22? Is that what I said on my report? And so anyone that has a V is paying vacant land, and anyone who has an R is paying residential. Vacant land is 29% tax, and residential, 7% tax.
And vacant land with a B, that, are they still living there?
In a shed with a port-a-potty.
Okay, that's why I wanted to know.
And so if you flip through that whole thing and pass it on, you'll be able to see structures that are very nice. And the problem is, is that a lot of people want their friends to see their house, they just don't want to invest in the underground components, because they're very expensive and you can't see them. You can't see a septic system. So, and it's expensive. It's five to six grand. But you should, you have to have plumbing to live in a house, but you don't have to have electrical. So a plumbing inspection has to be done, and the new septic rates are tied with the plumbing, plumbing inspect, plumbing code, sorry. So remember that there's, what I would like to see done is either we send out another letter stating that you cannot live in this, which I've done, because I've included those in my packet, or else they go back to vacant property. What's that?
Residential tax again?
Residential tax is 7%.
And what is 29?
It's 29% tax that people are paying on this.
Sorry to have interrupted.
No, I'm glad you did.
So you get a tax break, and there's 11 of them getting a tax break, and they didn't do their due diligence.
I'm a little confused, I'm sorry. Tax break comes by putting a septic in?
Tax break comes by JD's office saying you're residential, which...
And they're residential once they put the septic, they're tied to the septic.
Correct.
And your taxes are actually, assuming everything is the way it's supposed to, their tax will be lower with the septic system gone, that's why I just...
And septic, a residential is one bedroom, well, bedroom, bathroom, and kitchen. That's residential status, correct, Kelly?
I don't know. But I think, yeah.
Well, just a quick point of clarification. So the tax designation between residential and vacant, which Commissioner Prince is just asking about, is tied to the septic or tied to a dwelling?
Tied to a dwelling. In order to get a dwelling, you've got to have a septic.
And they're all tied together.
But if I own a piece of property and it's vacant, and I put a septic in that property, my understanding is that does not change my tax designation?
It does not change your tax.
It will not change until I...
When you go on the property and you're camping or something, and you permit your camper, you permit your shed, we'll ask you, "Do you have a septic?" And they'll say, "Yes." And they'll say, "Well, if you put a kitchen in it, and a bathroom in it, and a bedroom, then you're residential."
Right. Once you put a dwelling on it, correct? Not just the septic, because there's...
Correct, okay.
Certainly a lot of vacant land that have septic tanks on them with no dwelling.
Correct, correct. My concern right now is if you read the letter from the state of Colorado, the state of Colorado says, "We need to get everyone on a septic system." So I am doing my due diligence, trying to get everyone on a septic system, so I'm just covering my office to say, "Hey, I brought it before the commissioners," and that's all I have to do.
Do you have a recommendation for us?
Yes, I recommend you send out a letter, one more time, and tell them, "If you do not install an approved septic system, you will be considered vacant land."
And then we would tell them what the consequence of that is, your tax goes from the seven to 29.
I don't know if we can, can we? Can we do anything we want?
Yeah, pretty much, you and I can score our own way.
Okay.
Well, I'd say probably in your letter that the tax designation of your property will change, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think it's your job to tell them what the percentages are.
No, it's not. But, and I would word it correctly.
Make a change in their designation.
And it would be worded correctly.
I'd like it to say that your tax sort of goes significantly higher. Some, they need to understand there's some onus on them by not following the guidelines.
And 2014, they all got a letter.
So have they been paying the 29% now?
The ones that, the ones that you see the V on, on that list, but the ones you see an R on are residential tax.
Right. The others know that they have a higher tax, and they don't care.
So your recommendation is... Because the value of the property is not very high.
That's right. Fifty dollars?
Yeah. So your recommendation is to send another letter saying you're not in compliance, here's the consequences. Would you add to that, it's just a question, I'm suggesting, a question, that if you are not coming to compliance within X period of time, that legal action may ensue? I mean, is that...
And by letter, you mean a letter of violation?
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's my...
Is that delivered by the sheriff, or is it delivered in the mail?
It's delivered in the mail.
I think they ought to come up with a way of...
But when Mr. Smith and I get in, we'll be able to see some.
Well, you've already got the outs regulations. So we don't need that. The zoning rules.
That's right.
Is this a Jackie, or, request, or is this a plan, is this a type thing?
Oh, no, it's Jackie. It's a planning and moving office.
And that's what I thought, I mean, it didn't go to plans, I mean, it's just...
No, they only do certain things.
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
So, so I can get this straight. There's residential properties that don't have a septic that are in tax at the residential rate? Why would they move to residential?
I do not know.
Why would they, what?
Why would they move to residential?
Just because of that structure there.
Been that way for a long time?
Since, like, 2000.
Before your reign?
Before I took patrol.
Something maybe we need to talk to JD about, but is it possible to say to the people who have residential and their septic, that such and such a day, we're going to reassess their evaluation of your tax?
I have some too, but you know, I'm sure that JD will, will get the brunt of it, but something has to be done, because it's not fair that people redeveloped.
We need to be equitable with all of our residents. I absolutely agree with that. And I wish you the best, my dear.
You have a question, Jackie?
Yeah. You said, I'm a little confused by what you said about people who, a long time ago, got variances for chemical or whatever toilets.
Incinerating.
Okay.
The state allowed you.
Okay. And then they said no. And they weren't grandfathered in, is that correct?
No, I took all the ones that were grandfathered in, and they're not on the list. So anything prior to 2000, you were grandfathered in. But no one paid attention, well, we did, kind of, to what the state was saying after 2000, because the 2000 rakes came out from the ISDS, which was what outs was called, individual sewage disposal systems, and they basically said, "No more of this."
So there are still people out there that have composting toilets or whatever, because at the time, that was fine. And they will not be required to get septic.
No, so if you got one prior to 2000, you're still grandfathered in. That's what the state said. But before, after that, no, you're not grandfathered in. And they actually got a letter stating that.
What if the property changes hands?
Does that grandfather clause to... And in fact, the form that they got back in 2000 said that this variance does not go to the next owner.
Okay.
Doesn't run with the land.
The person. So we tag them upstairs, the files, so they'll get the file out to change the ownership, and they'll see our tag, and then we contact people that way.
And they'll have to get it.
And even prior to 2000, if you got a variance, and you have a tag on your file, it's not transferable.
You okay? You got your question answered?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we're all right, I'd like to move on.
So you're going to say I can do what I want?
I thought that was the general consensus, that you were...
I would like not to do a stuff, maybe, ever again.
Right. Additional violation letters, letters added.
And this is the kind of thing where the cease and desist order that is available through the outs regulations would be appropriate for somebody that just keeps ignoring these letters and everything else, to actually go out and post a notice that the property cannot be occupied, and put that warning tape up that seals the property. That would be a last resort before litigation, but it's a, I think that would be a pretty effective step.
So I'm going to give Mr. Attorney two more files to work on, that he's actually wrote letters to these people, but they're ignoring him now.
Here's your other packet.
Okay, so then we need to talk about your, our other situation.
Is that on the agenda later?
It's right below our report.
Yeah, let's finish the staff report first.
Okay.
No, you're not.
Yes, ma'am.
So I want to move to your financial summary. Do you have a copy up with you there, Kittle? Jackie and I discussed this yesterday. She has a comparison here between the month of January 2019 and the month of January 2020. If I'm speaking correctly, Ms. Jackie?
Yes.
Not, you interrupt me, please. Very interesting figures here. For example, the zoning permit fees for 2019 were $6,300, all around that. And the zoning permit fees for the first month and a half of 2020 is $2,800, almost a third of that, and we're in the first month, first 45 days of the year. But what I thought was even more interesting was your total income out of your office for 2019 was $10,600, and for the first month and a half of 2020, you're already over $6,000.
That's a total, that's a total, that's not the total, that's just a financial summary. The total income out of the office for the whole year is different. You understand that? That's just for that snapshot of that one month. That's just a snapshot of...
So the $10,600 represents...
One month.
One month of January of 2019. And so we're, maybe I misread that.
We are, you are, you're a little misrepresentative, but if you notice, use tax. Look at the line of use tax. In 2019, I had a builder come in and give us a check for over $2,000, just for the use tax due on that home he was building. Okay, so the use tax also, I just had a girl send a check in for four grand. Okay, so I have very few customers, not very few, I shouldn't say very few. I have some that keep data on their use tax. This is a funky little thing, and it's probably a good idea we bring that up at an appropriate time, because use tax is anything you purchase out of Custer County that you don't pay 4.9% sales tax. Then you owe Custer County 2%. So if you get garage doors and you don't pay the 4.9%, you would owe Custer County 2%. Same thing with septic systems, a septic contractor. I only have two contractors. Now, I want you to look at the total number of homes built last year that paid use tax, because it's... because it's done on a trusting base. If you say you owe me no use tax, then you owe me no use tax. And that is, goes into the, where does use tax, does it go to the general fund? Or does it go to the-
That goes to the general fund.
So that's another thing I think that the county needs to look at, because we have a lot of homes being built. We should see the use tax unbelievable by Rocket.
So we have no way to track and/or-
Enforce.
Enforce that. Let me back up, Jackie, maybe, because I think I saw you writing some numbers down, so I want to make sure I'm clear. So your financial summary comparison, January through January, probably threw me through a loop. I thought your 2019 figures were for the annual, but that doesn't really make sense when you look at the numbers. So that 2019 was for January 2019? Okay. So I misrepresented that.
So the $6,300 was just for January?
For January of 19, and $2,800 was for January of 2020. Is that right?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so I totally misspoke there, I apologize.
And in fairness, I don't think it's really fair to compare just one month, because January of 19, there may have been several big ones that are gonna come in in March or April this year.
Yeah, and you're gonna look at it.
You're really gonna look at it on an annual basis.
And the end of, there's no end of year financial figure here, but you're looking at probably about $150,000.
Yeah.
$170,000 that the office brings in. And I'm not saying, we do a lot of things in the zoning office that I think, that you don't understand too, because we did four septic contractors tests. We give a septic contractors test out in our office that costs $75. You get to take it once, if you fail, you get to take it one more time, but that's it. You have to pay another $75. It's 110 questions. We give out radon kits, we track all the leases for the airport, we do water test kits and stuff. So we constantly are trying to generate money.
What about relicenses?
How does that sound?
So-
Yeah, 50 bucks. Every, every September, you get a bill and you have to re-up your septic contractor license.
And if they don't, then they'd have to retake the test.
Correct.
Uh-huh. Anything else, Mr. Kanda? Oh, sorry, Mr. Prince, Mr. Kanda obviously has had to leave.
Yeah. My other question has gone back to the original list that you brought us. Did we, did we agree on how we're gonna handle it? I, I'm still kind of up in the air.
I think you just said that Jackie can do what she wants.
I thought by consent, we just, if they need to write some more letters, I think that's the responsibility of our office.
Absolutely, but, but I would also like to say, my suggestion would be that because of the inequity with the people who comply versus the ones who don't, we ought to give them an opportunity to come into compliance, but then I think we need to get nasty. And I don't mean nasty in terms of let's be ugly, but we need to bring them into compliance for multiple reasons. Once for the equity, but also for the health and safety of the people who are using inappropriate sanitation methods. So there's a reason those laws are out there. And I, I think a letter's perfectly fine, but I'd like to continue on after that with some of this.
Here's a really good example.
What number?
Of a large home.
Do you have a case number on that?
Yeah, 106000.
Well-
But I got them all in here, but I agree.
It's just the right thing to do. We can't play favorites and let people just go off forever. Be careful.
Uh, Jackie, another, just a comment here. I, I don't understand, everything comes out of your office, but when we get these reports, your case numbers, because if you told me a case number right now, I'd have to go through every document to look for that specific number. You see what I'm saying? Should we put those in numerical order so we can find them? If you say, if you'll look at 10215802-
So that they're, like, if we look at the, are you talking about the variances, you'll never find them that way, because that's a specific number that you would only find if you looked it up in the assessor's office.
Right. I'm just saying, when you give us this paperwork, when you scan these in, could you scan them in in a numerical order so we don't go? I don't have many documents, there are probably 15 or 20 documents. If I was looking for a case number, I'd have to look at every one of those documents.
Okay, so they're not, the letters are done by dates.
Okay.
But I wrote the number on the top.
Right.
But that number will only be reflected in the assessor's site.
Okay.
That's the number that this, parcel number that the assessor goes by. I only give numbers because I don't want people to know that I'm picking on somebody.
So if I sent to Commissioner Prince today, right now, Commissioner Prince, I have a problem with the letter 156203. Could, could you look that up real quick so we can talk about that? He's gonna have to go through every document to find that letter. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So if you just scan them in, or by date's fine. If you, if I said, well, that's dated February 18th, that's probably gonna make it easier for him to look. But I didn't know that until just now. So either way.
And so do you think it was me or Kara?
Oh, welcome. Excuse me?
But if you, if you, well, if you want to reference it by date, we'd still have to do the same thing. I'm just asking, could we numerically scan them in, sort them in in a number order?
10222, 10223?
Right, 103, 104, and on down the list.
Okay, I could do that.
We're probably not gonna look at these individual letters.
The other commissioners never wanted that, but I'm sure they needed that.
No, because they didn't pay attention. They didn't care like we care.
Whoa.
Well, I just-
That was not for me.
I just threw that out there.
Okay, I'm done.
Um, anything else?
Yeah, the big one.
Commissioner Prince?
No, I'm fine. I just, I appreciate the diligence to get people to comply.
Yeah, we just gotta keep, and somewhere, we gotta go beyond writing the letters.
That's what I was trying to bring up.
Yeah, exactly.
One more, that's fine, and then they should get us on it.
Okay, and obviously, if it came to it, and we said, now, we've entered into a lawsuit with this person, Jackie, how many letters did we send them? Typically, what would that answer be? Two or three?
She'd send out her letters, and I'd send out a letter, and then-
And then-
And then, if, if we have a cease and desist order provision, that would probably be the next step before a lawsuit.
Okay, all right. But they're get-
The DOCS regulations, we've already got the cease and desist.
I think we do, I do.
But technically, they would get two letters, is that right?
At least. Sometimes they get two or three from my office, because I, we give them, but then they get a letter from her.
She bends over backward to try to get them to, I mean, get in touch with her, and they, sometimes they do, and they promise they're gonna bring in the money to pay whatever they owe, and then they go.
I just, I hope we don't ever get there, but if we end up in court and somebody says, well, I got six letters from her, and now they're suing you because you, but you only got two letters. I mean, we have a protocol in place.
It depends how much I like you.
All right, we'll move on. Thank you, ma'am. Consideration of question, file lawsuits for zoning violations.
She's given me one where the people actually, they built structures, didn't get the permit, they owe, I think, $1,727 for the permit. They promised to come in and to have it paid by the end of January, they never showed up.
That was the end of this year, or was that, when did we start that one?
I don't know, I have that file at home, but, um, they, because then I wrote them a letter to get in touch with Jackie, and they didn't respond. Did anybody ever get in, okay. So that one's ready, that one's a simple one, because it's a promissory note, just sue on the note, get a judgment against them for it, and then we can try to collect on that. It becomes a lien on the property, so they can't just keep ignoring it.
I don't know if you realize this, but when someone builds a structure and they are called in on it, they are charged three times the amount.
Aware of that, yes.
Okay, so a lot of times, they can't afford it. They couldn't afford it the first time, so they're not gonna be able to afford it the three times charge, so-
You're talking about zoning permits, right?
Pardon?
Typically, you're talking about zoning permits.
Zoning permits, so we have a promissory note in my office that you promised to pay me so much a month until your debt is paid off.
Okay. Does that pertain to this $1,700?
Yes.
Yeah, there is a note that was signed, saying they haven't paid anything on that.
But it's past due, obviously.
A lot.
A lot past due. Have they paid any?
Yeah, we haven't paid anything.
Yeah, they did it the first time.
Did they?
When they signed the promissory note.
This is what you mentioned yesterday.
But that was months ago.
Okay.
So you want to proceed?
We're asking for permission for the board to authorize filing a lawsuit in this case, and then it'd be nice to just have certain-
Do you have a case number?
I don't remember.
How do you want to refer to this? Because we're getting ready to make a motion.
That wouldn't be my issue, that would be your attorney's issue.
I cannot make up case numbers.
I can get the case number.
We're not gonna use a person's name, I will tell you that, so we need to refer it somehow.
He's got the file.
Give me a second, I could use the case number.
It's not my fault. It's like Kara did what she did, she scanned it and went wrong, and then he lost, he's got the file. I'm innocent.
Any more disparaging remarks?
I'll see you to stand on.
Any more disparaging remarks towards our administrative assistant? I'm gonna authorize Commissioner Prince to whack you with this boot, is that clear?
Um, can I do, can I do one more?
So-
I forget the name, and nothing comes up. Man, all right.
MC Space.
I have a question.
So, Jackie, do you remember roughly-
Yeah.
-the first payment on the promissory note, how much that was? What are we talking about? Couple hundred bucks?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it was like $250. Do you remember?
Okay. Well, it wasn't like they paid $1,000, and now they still owe $700.
Find it.
The parcel number is 10236165.
Okay. Are you okay with referring to that parcel number in this instance today?
That's fine.
Okay. I would move that we authorize Clint through the Planning and Zoning Office to proceed with litigation on the promissory note concerning parcel 10236165.
And how would that be?
Oh, you're out of order, ma'am. Is there a second?
Yes, I have a second.
Thank you. We're moving to second it, to move forward with litigation in the aforementioned parcel. Any debate or discussion or questions? Yes, ma'am?
No man's ever said I was out of order.
Yes, he did. You mean until today? Okay. So you're 10236165?
Not that, the motion.
Oh, the motion was to authorize planning and zoning with the assistance of counsel to move forward with litigation on the promissory note pertaining to that parcel number. Thank you. Mr. Prince, or, yes, Commissioner Prince?
Thank you. Just a question. Each time we're, we're gonna file suit, do we need to approve this? So can we make kind of a rule that, you know, if counsel has done X, Y, and this period of time has gone by, they have the authorization to go ahead and take their action? Or do you feel it's a, the commissioners should vote each time we file suit against someone for a zoning violation?
I just don't know. Give you my personal opinion, I think we should, because if we don't, and you happen to be in a coffee shop, and somebody costs you about this, you would have no idea that what was going on, until we get to a staff report. I mean, we're, who's, who's filing the lawsuit? The three of us.
Yeah, the county's, the county's filing. I agree with that, but I mean, we do a lot of things.
In the name of the Board of County Commissioners, you're the-
Right. We do a lot of things, but we don't sue a lot of people.
Okay.
That's, that's where I'm coming from.
I was more requesting a demand or anything, I said, I have no demand on that.
Yeah, if counsel has a different opinion, that's just where I'm coming from. If we're gonna start suing people, I'd like to know that, when that happens, but-
So ultimately, I'm gonna need to know who that person is, so when they do a cost fee, I can say, go talk to Jackie.
Oh, I think certainly, but that's-
That's why I don't, I don't think it's appropriate that I do staff meetings, because there's a lot-
Oh, wow.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Because there's a lot of people that probably shouldn't be published.
I assume that that is why you assign case numbers to these, we just didn't have the case number in there.
Well, it doesn't take rocket scientists to figure out the case number.
Apparently it does. We didn't have one for this particular instance.
But in fairness, they're not rocket scientists.
Oh, that's a good point. All right. We digress. Yes, ma'am?
So, that's not a case number, it's a parcel number.
That is a parcel number.
Anybody can look that up.
That's why I looked at both of the newspapers, said, please submit it.
Yes, but if it's in the minutes, so it's up to, I mean, if I'm gonna take it out of mine, and I, I don't care.
This is a problem for us.
I don't care.
Well, even if it was a case number, you could go to Jackie and request that case number, right?
That's true.
But once you file it, then it's a public document, and anybody, once it's filed, anybody could look at it.
Point taken.
Would you give that part, case number out if somebody asks you for that?
I'd tell them to come back.
Under the open records of law?
I'd tell them to come back, and I'd get it for them tomorrow, and then they usually forget.
Okay.
But they do have- Is this your policy?
They do have a right to those, to that information.
And once it's filed, it's-
See, that's why I think that it's almost like confidential information.
This isn't confidential, it's a matter of courtesy to the property owners.
So it's a matter of courtesy that I don't do a staff report?
Well, and, yeah, well, and the reality is, if they're maybe ignoring letters from Clint, then having their name in a public meeting, they won't care.
And you know, the point is really well taken, because people who don't pay their property tax, and we post their names right on the bulletin board. See, the point's really well taken.
Yeah.
Okay.
I still don't care who it is.
Further discussion, hearing none, we vote, all in favor of authorizing Attorney Smith to work with Planning and Zoning Office to move forward with litigation. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay?
Motion carries two to one, Commissioner Kanda being absent.
Oh, is that how it's recorded?
Yes, absent vote. Two in favor, one ab, uh, one no vote. Uh, thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Consideration of finance resolutions, our next item of business.
I tried to add some spark to it.
So I drafted two resolutions, 20-05, 20-06. I think these have gone through the vetting process with Ms. Kelly, with Ms. Virginia, with Attorney Smith, and, and three commissioners have had an opportunity. Look at this, let's deal with one at a time, if we may. Commissioner Prince, you are at that, and do you have said document? And do you have said document?
I'll go ahead, and I'll move, so we can get the discussion going, that we approve Resolution 20-05, a resolution of Coastal County political subdivision of Colorado hereby create a landfill expansion fund to be established and maintained by the Coastal County Treasurer.
Thank you, sir. I'll second the motion. We're moving seconded to adopt Resolution 20-05. Discussion, counsel, anything?
No, just for the record, these are what is considered committed funds that can only be used for that purpose, and this is under the recommendation of the auditor that the county used.
Correct.
He uses.
It could be used for something else if we've done so by resolution, have a subsequent date. But the whole point here was to create accounts that we can house funds in specifically for landfill expansion, or later, specifically for the Justice Center. But I wanna speak to the landfill, because that's where we're at. I think the important thing that we've mentioned, based on our recommendations from the auditor, was that we need to start these accounts with dedicated funds, committed funds, and they need to be indicated in the resolution. Beginning balance of the landfill, I'm on third resolution, number, resolution number three, sub-resolution, actually. The landfill expansion fund shall be established at the value of $17,716.35, and that the recurring revenue stream shall be established as $1 per cubic yard of commercial waste deposited in the landfill, and said funds shall be deposited on an annual basis. And in sub-resolution five, oh, yeah, five, is that the other recurring revenue stream of said account shall be the total deposits generated by the landfill recycling sales annually. Further discussion? Ms. Kelly, you good?
Yep.
Okay. Think the language is right here? I mean, we've gone through it two or three times. Further discussion?
What's the amount that you can deposit?
Uh, we're gonna start this with $17,716.35, and that represents the recycle revenue from 2019, and it also represents the...
Commercial.
Commercial dollars per commercial cubic yard. Yes, that's how we're gonna fund those. There are other possibilities, but those are the two recurring. There might be other funds put into those accounts, but we were directed to identify those in the resolution. Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay? Motion carries, two votes in favor, one no vote. Commissioner Canda is absent. I don't know if you want to attest this until Commissioner Canda's signed it, or do you attest that we passed the resolution? I don't know what that is, testation.
Oh, yeah, he won't sign it, because he's not here, so he just put absent, and I just attest that. I'll write absent on here.
Okay. Because he will not have the opportunity to sign it. Okay, next item, well, we're still in the same item of business, so the next resolution, 20-06, basically the same, the same language. The beginning balance of the Justice Center Fund shall be established at $35,801. The recurring revenue stream for said fund shall be established at $1,600 per month generated by the monthly revenue from the AT&amp;T lease agreement, and other revenue streams of said account shall be established as the Board of County Commissioners deems appropriate.
I move that we adopt Resolution 20-06, a resolution of Coastal County political subdivision of the state of Colorado, hereby creates a Justice Center Fund to be established and maintained by the Coastal County Treasurer.
I will second that motion. May I look at that other resolution real quick? Since we're in a discussion, is the base? Thank you. I think we have a problem. Uh, do you have, can I send these to you? So number five on the 2606 says, "Other revenue streams for said account shall be established as the Board of County Commissioners deems appropriate." We do not have that language in 2005. I guess we've asked counsel out. We need to be able to deposit other revenues in both of these accounts as the situation arises, both tax money and non-tax money, if that's the case, right?
I would suggest you just make a motion to amend the resolution.
That's what I was gonna ask you, to add number five.
So you need to get that done today.
Okay, so let's finish this, and then we'll go back, and we'll do that amendment during this main motion. Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of adopting Resolution 20-06? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay? Motion carries, two in favor, one no vote. Commissioner Canda is absent. I would move, may I, sorry, I would move to adopt, I just wanna make sure the numbers are right, Kelly. I would move to...
You've got the same numbers, the wording's just...
We're missing...
Other revenue streams?
We would be missing other revenue streams in 2005.
Right. So we just need to change number five, because you've got a number five.
Right.
I mean, we've got seven points on each one.
Right.
So we just need to change number, reword number five.
Uh, no, because if we reword number five, then we're interfering with the landfill recycling sales annually. So we either do a 4A, or we renumber them and add a number five. That's what I was gonna amend this to.
So we just have one more point?
One more, one more, therefore be it resolved. Does that make sense? So I would amend Resolution 20-05 by inserting a new number five with the following wording, "Other revenue streams for said account shall be established as the Board of County Commissioners deems appropriate," and renumber the existing number five, six, and seven to renumber six, seven, and eight. It's been moved and seconded to amend 20-05 by adding the other revenue streams statement and changing the numbers accordingly. Discussion? You all right, sir? You okay with this? Public comment? I guess counsel have a question. If we, if this amendment passes, then can we just re-sign the new document?
Actually, maybe the way you should do it is to move to set aside the previous Resolution 20-05 and adopt the new one.
New as amended?
Yes. Instead of calling it an amended resolution, let's just...
I got it.
Make it, you know, since it's all part of the agenda now, you're just, why don't you just rescind the first one you approved and...
Okay. So I'm gonna withdraw my amendment, sir. You're drawing it second, because we'd be out of order if we got into that realm during the discussion of an amendment. So the amendment has been withdrawn. Commissioner Prince, would you care to move to rescind?
Sure. I move to rescind Resolution number 20-5, as approved previously.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded to rescind the action of adopting Resolution 20-05. I don't have, I don't believe that's the debatable motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay? Motion carries, two in favor and one no vote. Commissioner Canda is absent, so that... You want, just make a note on that, Kelly. It's like 5A, 5B, and you change numbers or whatever, we get to that point. So then, you're saying we should adopt...
I would say just change that language and just approve Resolution 20-05, which is the one that you're gonna have in front of you.
Okay. So...
So we'll just make it, we'll just change it like you had in your motion?
Yes.
And then make a new motion to adopt it as a statement?
Correct. So I move we adopt 20-05 with other revenue stream statement included. We're moving seconded to adopt 20-05 with the addition of other revenue stream statement as a number five and change nerves, the current number five, six, and seven to seven, eight, six, seven, and eight. Further discussion? Public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay? Motion carries, two in favor, one no vote. Commissioner Canda is absent, so now we'll go back to Resolution 20-06, correct? Or did we already approve that? We've got that approved, so we need to sign that. That's where we were at. The other thing is, just by way of information, if we ever get to some kind of a sales tax or mill levy tax to support the Justice Center, then we will have an account to deposit those funds in. Currently, we did not. No action. Any other additional items of business come before the board at this time?
I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am. We'll do it, we'll call it a public comment.
$175 for the chamber?
Yes.
What funds would that amount?
Oh, that's a great point.
Community outreach.
Yeah, community outreach. We didn't include that in the motion, but, yep.
Seventy hits.
Can you let the record reflect that, Ms. Kelly? That $175 would come out of the community outreach. Good, good point. Anything else? Public comment? You're good. Hearing no further public comment and no need for an executive session, the chair declares the meeting adjourned at 12:29 PM on February 19th, 2020.